Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:32. I'll call the meeting to order. For the September 9th, 2014, meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board, let me begin by reminding everyone who is going to offer testimony to sign in, make sure your microphone's turned on and speak clearly into it. As an announcement, the next bike and pedestrian subcommittee meeting will be September 16th, 7:30 PM, in this Matthew Thornton room. The next Planning Board meeting is scheduled for September 23rd, 2014, at 7:30 PM, also in this room. I don't have any other announcements. With that, it brings us to item two on the agenda, which is Planning and Zone Administrators Report. Donna?
Nothing tonight.
Is there any questions for Donna, members of the Planning Board? I don't have any questions, but I do want to observe that our friends over at Morgan Self-Storage, which used to be Xylas, have done, I think, a good job with the landscaping and the little fences that they put around. I think it's quite an improvement in their site. And I know that they don't have anything before us, but maybe they're listening. They deserve a pat in the back. Nelson, did you have a comment or question?
No, I concur.
Okay. Item number three on our agenda is John J. Flatley Company is the applicant and owner, review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for a conditional use permit to permit a future mixed-use development consisting of industrial, multifamily, residential, commercial, restaurant, and retail uses. Parcels are located at 645, 673, 685, 703, and 707 DW Highway, in the I-1 Industrial, Oqfor Conservation, and Wellhead Protection Districts, tax map 6E, lot 3-1, 3, 4, 5, and 6. The item has been continued previously from the July 22nd, 2014, meeting and the August 5th, 2014 Planning Board meetings. And as you see in your packet, the applicants requested a continuance, again, to September 23rd, 2014 Planning Board meeting. And I know that they're trying to obtain some of the peer review and some of the other efforts that need to get done in order for us to have a meaningful opportunity to see what they have before us. Donna, were we able to determine that September 23rd? Has it given them enough time to do what they need to do?
Yes, I've been informed that they're redesigning the layout and we should have plans by Friday.
Okay. So the September 23rd's a good date to pick for them. Are there any comments or questions about the request of the applicant for a continuance to September 23rd?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We grant the request of the applicant to continue this matter till September the 23rd, 2014, at 7:30 PM in this room, the Matthew Thornton Room at Merrimack Town Hall. And there will be no further notice to any of those.
Is there a second for that motion?
A second, Pat.
Second by Ms. Fault. Any other discussion? Let me fill in the administrative gap and appoint Nelson to vote for Lynn tonight. There we go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? It is 5:00 for our vote tonight. Thank you, Nelson. I'm sorry for being a little slow on the uptake there. Brings us to item number four on the agenda, which is Bowers Landing, a Merrimack LLC, review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for an amendment to the previously approved site plan to construct 50 single-family units rather than multifamily units in Phase Three of Harris Pond Plan Development, located at Bowers Landing Drive in the I-1 Industrial and Oqfor Conservation Districts, tax map 1D, lot 1-3. Donna, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Not really. Just that if this looks familiar, it's because they came for a pre-submission hearing in February, in front of the board.
Thank you for that. And I see our applicant setting up for a presentation. Okay, all set, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please. Introduce yourself.
My name is Matt Peterson with Hillside Design Group. Here with me tonight is Steve Keach of Keach-Norstrom Associates, as well as Bob Folsom of Merrimack Landing, Bowers Landing and Merrimack, sorry. As was just stated, we're here about in February. It was during one of our snowstorms this winter, so we didn't have a full board at that time. So maybe not all of you have seen this beforehand. But we started this project last fall with staff. We had come in with a design that mimicked what was originally approved and kind of just switched them from the townhouse-type units to a single-family type development. At that time with staff, they kind of gave us some input, asked us if we could come back with more of a neighborhood-type feel. We took their input at that hearing, came back to conceptual hearing in February, worked out the details there, and then basically have spent the last six months putting together the plans, getting them up to the state for approvals, and now we're here in front of you guys. So just to give you a quick overview of the project, I think most of you are familiar where this is, I would assume. This is Bowers Landing. It's going to be behind the Dunkin' Donuts down on the main road. We have garden-style units as you first come in, then we have a townhouse-type unit next, and then this is the next phase of it. This was going to be more townhouse units originally. The market is kind of, we're looking to add a little different flavor to the development. It gives us all three phases now. We can have some single families, which will be similar to Parker Village, which is down behind, basically, that new vault-type car storage place that we got there. And it allows people the townhouses and it allows the garden style. So we have basically three different types of uses to kind of offer to people that come in and want to either rent or buy the product. You should all have 11-by-17s, I assume, in front of you. If you flip to the first sheet, it's a quick overview of it. Again, we're proposing 50 single-family detached units. Originally, we have a number of 121, is it, for the total? 121 is for the total. This parcel here had 48 townhouses. We're going to put 50, which means we lose two more for the rest of it. We understand that we're only allowed the 121 total at the end of the day. We may not even get to that, depending on how the next kind of phases play out.
Matt, when you say 121, you mean 121 remaining? Because there was 256 total in the original.
121 was for this phase, which is the townhouse phase. Yes, there is another garden style that we can do other units there, and we may have to lose units on that. But this townhouse, the part was 121, sorry.
Thank you.
As you can see from the layout, the initial feel is to bring in the main road, which was very similar to the original proposal that was here. It came in at one point and then did a big loop in the development here. So everybody was kind of in the same neighborhood. And that's what Tim had brought to us, and actually back at the time, was Nancy was sitting in the meeting, to kind of create the neighborhoods. So we've broken this up into now where we have basically three different pods. It's very nice for phasing. It gives each person their own kind of neighborhood, their own kind of area. It reduces, obviously, drive-through and wrapping around and stuff like that that we had on the previous project. And again, this was working with staff to come up with something along these lines, and this is exactly what we presented to you back in February. The little changes we made since February is really just on grading in the unit itself. He's got a little bit further along on the type, the final layout of the unit and the configuration of it. All the units here, about 20 feet separation, kind of tried to give enough room around each unit so that they have the area to do what they need to do. But it is kind of a PUD-type of development here. If you turn to the next couple sheets, which is going to be Sheets Two and Three, because when this project was originally done, almost 10 years ago now, we had to have the wetlands reflagged out there. We've done that. We had the new site-specific soil mappings done. That's what's shown on these plans here. This parcel now, or this phase, is about 36 acres in size. Those plans there, you'll see the topo, spot grades, all the existing information that we had to pick up on the site. One of the things we really tried to incorporate in this is taking into consideration this type of development and the things that we usually come across is visitor parking, not enough of, places for people to actually park their cars in their lots, in their house. So we really took a lot of effort. And each one of these units has a two-car garage. They could go to a one if the person wanted it, but what we've kind of found out, we don't see that that's ever going to get down to that point. We also did 20 feet of pavement in front of each garage, so they basically have two spaces in front of the garage. And then we did another 36 visitor parking. If you look at where we've laid them out, we've done four and four up in here in this pod here, so it'd give you a nice location right next to your units. Again, another eight in this pod here, another eight in this pod here. So we've really allowed good visitor parking there. And then we have another clump down here, which takes care of this pod, and another six over in this pod. So I think, unlike, you know, a lot of projects where you try and stick it and make everybody walk 10 miles to their units, we've really tried to, again, working with staff six months ago, come up with something that made sense.
Can I ask a question on the garage? I might have missed it. A one-car garage and paving for two in front?
Yes.
So that's the three.
Yep.
Say one-car garage? I thought you said two-car garages.
We believe they're all going to be two-car. The only thing he's saying, he's offering if somebody wanted a one-car, they could.
Okay, I got you.
The cost that'd go from a two down to a one for somebody, they're going to save maybe $400. Because once you're already building the garage, it kind of doesn't make sense. So once he gets into marketing, he just wanted me to at least explain that if somebody came and said, "Listen, I only want one." But we're proposing on these right here are all two, with the pavement with two. So we're actually showing four for each unit on the plan.
Just to clarify, I live in Parker Village.
Okay.
And most people want a two-car garage and two-car driveway.
Yeah, I would agree with you. That was my design about 10, 15 years ago, so I think that worked out pretty well. And we really mimicked that. I mean, that's where I took this from when I first met the owners and kind of tried to come up with something on that. On the site plans that you have in front of you there is your typical stuff. I think all of you guys have gone through this. These sheets, which is numbers five, six, and I believe seven, is going to outline all the different pavement markings, centerline radiuses, lengths of cul-de-sacs, stop signs, stop bars, kind of all that kind of stuff, striping and that. Just to go through the lengths of the cul-de-sac, because that was something that was discussed at the conceptual hearing, it was brought up that the board members liked the new layout, and if we were going to need waivers of cul-de-sac length, there would be something that they would actually look at potentially at the conceptual hearing. However, based on this design, we will not be required any of those. Just so the board understands, from this point here, at the end of Jared Road, Jared Way, and Bowers Landing Drive, up to the end of the crown point right here, is 819 feet, .27. Starting at the same point, making our way up and around, and all the way to the end of this circle, is 1,086.85. And then starting at this point here, and making its way all the way into this point here, is 987.15. So we really tried to make everything inside the regulations and worked with the staff to come up with something that made sense. When I say, just so you know, the distances, it starts from this point here in your cul-de-sac, and I took it straight to the end this way. I didn't go around and come back. I mean, that's not how we usually measure them. So just want it clear, if you look at it, because you'll see some of the numbers a little bit higher because of the extra pavement that's there.
I think we've actually had even more generous interpretations of the way you measure them, so that you don't have to come all the way out to the beginning. You just measure from the nearest cross street. So as you come in past those three houses, you measure from there to the ends, or you'd be in better shape.
I remember the way he laid it out. I think Matt's right. That was the way.
I mean, certainly his measurements are fine, but when we did a subdivision not that long ago, that I think was on Pearson Road.
The one on Amherst Street, Amherst Road, I mean, yeah, we did, we had to bend that one. They've actually done better than.
Yeah, I mean, they designed it so it would comply the way, but we did adopt that interpretation from the nearest bend for that one, so.
Okay. Well, again, we're from the centerline. We met it, so we're not asking for a waiver on that, so. If you turn to pages seven and eight, this is kind of the meat of the project. Goes through all of our grading, all of our drainage. We tried to utilize some of the existing stuff that was out there, which they had a big pond up in this location here, and then they had a second pond down on the other side, which I'll show you on the other sheet. We talked at the conceptual hearing, possibly bringing everything down into this area here and opening up this tree area here for drainage because of where everything was and stuff like that. It would open up a different view corridor. I mean, you're not going to see it from the main road, but again, we try to develop things so that when people drive down here 20 years from now, you don't see everything that's there if we can. So what this gentleman here was able to do at Keach-Norstrom was take all of our drainage from the development, bring it down to the southeast corner of the project, and in doing so, the existing townhouse development, which has a catch basin, catch basin, and an outlet currently, that just goes to one of those about 15 years ago, 50-foot-long grass-treatment swales that we're going to collect everything that went out there. And we've actually been able to tie that into our sediment four-bank with our development, then put it into an infiltration basin, and then dump it out. So we're actually cleaning the water, new regulations with Department of Environment, I mean, DES, cleaning the old stuff with ours. So it's worked out very, very nice. Phasing standpoint works out beautifully also, because it doesn't matter on phasing what phase we're in. The drainage in this will be in a phase one, and everything else just kind of ties into it. So it was a very nice, very clean design, left the buffers along the main road there, and then we've worked with some landscaping and stuff like that with the buffers between the existing stuff that's out there. We've met, the owner here, Bob, has met with the association a couple times. I know a couple of them here tonight. I'm not sure if they've got some input, they would like to put more to it, but we have, again, like we talked back in February, done our due diligence, tried to met a couple times and walked through the project so that we could address things before we got to you guys. Drainage is pretty simple again. We're doing closed drainage with the catch basins. The only other detention basin that we needed is up in the backside here. Because we're going to pitch the roofs to the back, we needed to collect the water that was coming off of those units in the back. So what they did is they came up with a, basically, area drains in the back of units 33, 34, 35, 36, and 37. And that goes to this small detention basin here and swale coming down to it. Again, the only thing we're treating is about five or six of the homes there. So as I say, most of our drainage goes to the one pond. There were a couple roofs that we just couldn't bring it back around, and it kind of made sense to go back up in here. It didn't affect our buffers. There was a little bit more tree cut here, but this is where the main pond was beforehand, so we felt it was a pretty good trade-off. The next couple sheets in your package, nine and 10, those are going to outline all of our state requirements for erosion control, silt sock. We're basically doing dandy bags inside the catch basins during construction. Shows where our slopes are going to need to be stabilized during construction. A very clean plan for a contract to understand what he's got to do during construction to make sure we don't have any erosion control issues and runoff from it. Sheets number 11 and 12, those are our utility plans. We have water, we have town sewer, we have gas, and we have underground electric. These plans show everything. We have met with the sewer commission. There's a couple changes that I wanted to have made and that we will make as part of some of the revisions here with them. There's a couple sewer manholes that got dropped out in the lawns, not usually aesthetically pleasing at the end of the day. People like to try and put dirt over them and put grass over them, and hard to find later on. So they've asked us to move those back into the right, into the road bed itself. So these will get pulled back just a couple feet so that they're in the pavement here and here. But other than that, it's been pretty minor stuff through the utility companies and stuff like that that we've done. It's a pretty clean layout. The next two plans are what everybody's going to see when the project's done. 13 and 14 is your landscaping plans. As you know, Keach-Norstrom has a landscape architect on staff. She's put her seal on these plans here. I haven't seen any comments. Again, we don't have CLD comments, or we don't, I'm not sure if CLDs are going. We don't have comments from the engineer yet. Staff had a few comments and stuff like that, that they had brought back to us. You know, we're willing to look at whatever that comes up there, but again, we've tried to put together a nice aesthetically pleasing product at the end of the day.
Can I ask you one question here? Centers in the island, are trees going in there?
Lots.
Lots of trees.
All this here is land, well, not all trees. I mean, it's bushes, it's trees, it's landscaping, but it's not a detention basin, if that's what you're asking.
There's a ton of material here, so I can't put my finger right on it, but I thought you mentioned in that you use the islands for snow storage. How could you do that with trees on them?
Was that stated on the plan somewhere? I will, I'll have to take a look at that one, if you got me on that. I think this sets 39 sheets here, so I might have missed that.
But I just want you to know.
It's a good comment.
We'll be looking for it later.
Yep. The next couple sheets in it, which would be 15 and 16, are going to outline the type of lighting we're proposing. If you look on sheet 15, we're proposing a carriage lantern-type light post, you know, very similar, actually, to Parker Village. I'm not looking to light up the world, it's more of a direction, you know? You can kind of see when winter comes, kind of getting around some of the bends and stuff like that. You can see you've got zeros, you know, all the way up to the houses there, so.
Is the lighting consistent with the previous phases? Have you stuck with the same fixtures?
That's a good question. Yeah, I wasn't involved with the first phases, and I should have that on top of my head, but I don't. I don't know if we'd leave it that way or not. I mean, we kind of, this is kind of its own community. Yeah, it should be the same as what's on the other one, so. Yeah, yeah. That was Steve Keach with Keach-Norstrom. He says the other ones had LED lights. These do. We will, that's, we need to make them the same.
Do me a favor, repeat what Steve said so that it can be heard on a microphone and make it two minutes.
What Steve was stating is that the type of bulb in the lights that are there currently compared to what is proposed on this here is a different type of bulb in the light itself. But I'm going to, on record right now, that we'll do the same lighting that's throughout the development. the development, because it should, it should carry through. It's, these guys are all part of the same association for the clubhouse. They should all have the same, same look that's through it, so.
And if it helps, if it helps, the snow is not designated to go in the center of those things. There are snows, there are designated snow points elsewhere on the, in the plans, on each of the little, little areas, there is a snow area marked, and then you're guaranteed to remove the rest of it.
Thank you.
I can find, I found that for you.
Do my homework.
But while I'm talking now, let me get my oar in. As I understand it, stage three includes a clubhouse. You sort of not mentioned the clubhouse.
What we would like to do is, at the end of phase two, before the beginning of phase three, is build the clubhouse. I have a letter from the associations here on what they would like built as part of the clubhouse. Again, we've been trying to work with everybody throughout the project. So, what I'll do is I'll submit this to the board from the association on what they are looking for out there. Basically, they would like to have around 1,800 square feet. They are going to work with Bob on the final amenities inside and outside, but they do not want a pool. Their other concern is why we'd like to do it after phase two is they would like to have a few more people paying into the association before they had to take over the clubhouse and manage it. So, he was just sitting back here, and we went through the numbers. There's 16 in phase one and 14 in phase two, or 12, 14 and 12. So, it gives us 26. So, it gets us halfway there, and then the clubhouse comes in, they've got some people to go with the clubhouse. And this is only the clubhouse for the 121. There would be another clubhouse later for the garden styles, if that comes forward and when that comes forward. So, there'd be three total on site at the end of the day.
What bothers me, I'm sorry, what bothers me is, is when it might be built. And the reason for that is, I have a friend in Hudson at, at a location, they've been waiting six years for their clubhouse.
He just said first. He just said it's the first thing he's going to build.
No, he said at the end of phase two.
At the end of phase two.
All this stuff is phase three. Everything on your map is 3A, 3B, 3C, 3D.
It's about a phase eight, but.
This was something I was just told a couple minutes ago. So, we had, because of the February hearing, we knew it was a very big issue, was the clubhouse. So, we had shown it down here in phase one. Again, we've been working with the association back and forth, and they've come back to us, and their main concern was having people to pay into the association when they could do it. So, he worked it out.
Matt, can I just interrupt you for one quick second? The nomenclature on your plan is 3A, 3B, 3C, 3D.
The plan you have in front of you shows it in phase one. I'm saying on the record right now, we'd like to move it to the end of phase two.
Okay, but my plan doesn't have a phase one, it has 3A.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
3A is the first stage you intend to build.
3A is phase one, 3B, 3C, 3D, sorry.
Perfect. That's my, clarification to make sure we knew what we were talking about. So, you want to build the clubhouse that is sitting in 3A as a part of 3B, or after 3B?
Yes.
Gotcha. Stan, I'm sorry for interrupting you, you were right, I was wrong.
That's okay, but there's no guarantee a clubhouse would be built.
If nobody bought any homes, I understand what you're saying.
Oh, what's happened there is now they're, they're shooting for 160 homes, and they have maybe about 50. And the building as requested, and the clubhouse has been put off. And so, I just don't want to see any problems. And the other thing, you made the mistake of saying that you want to make this like Parker Village. Well, if the lights are like the ones in Parker Village, they're expensive and they're not working great.
No, no, I want to make the lights the same as the other phases that have been through here.
Okay, that's, that's all.
I'm sorry.
There's no more modern lighting. And just from this, I couldn't tell.
But we presumably would have no problem suggesting that they cannot build phases 3C and 3D unless we go and have a drink in the clubhouse.
You may want to.
Well, it's, it's one way of putting it. I mean, I wouldn't put that in the minutes, of course, but you know what I'm getting at? We have to see the clubhouse up and built and running before you can pull a permit for 3C and 3D.
I think that's what he's proposing, and if that's the will of the board to agree with that, see how that pairs out.
Yeah, the owner's okay with that. That would make sense. So, no COs, and, I mean, no building permits on phase 3C.
C and D.
Until the, and D, until the clubhouse is built.
Okay.
That satisfies you then?
And I mean, that's, that's 26. I understand what you're saying, but that's 26, so it's kind of a, it's not 161 before the clubhouse, it's not 50. I mean, I could go down to 10 or something, but it's, I mean, I think it kind of balances it a little bit.
Yeah, 26.
All I'm concerned is that the clubhouse is built as fast as possible, so people can enjoy it. That's all. Get to the parking later.
Cut.
Can I?
Yeah, please, I was going to read it. Oh, I'll break.
If you turn to sheet 17, this is one of the sheets I'll go through now. There's two waiver requests that we're going to be asking for at the end of the day here. One of them's related to this sheet here. The main road coming in Jared's Way, which is on the far-left corner. Within the handout that I just gave you, if you flip across the first page, you'll see your regulations. And in your site plan subdivision regulations, 4.2, it goes into your road standards. Just so you understand, this is a private road, privately maintained. But 4.12B requires your K-values at your crest and your sag to be a minimum of 30 and 40. What that is, it's the differential between the grade coming into the curve, the grade going out of the curve, and making sure as you're rolling with your car that you can see as you come up, or you can see as you go down and over. So, you design those for roads that are continuing through. At this two locations, we come to a stop part and a stop sign on both sides. In the 20, let's see, 18 years I've been doing this, I don't know if we've ever got K-values at those two points that would meet the 30 and 40, because you're coming to a stop sign. So, what I talked to staff about, because you don't have CLD review yet, I would like to ask for a waiver with their blessing on it, you know, afterwards, if that's where they were at with it. So, in these two locations, it's the K-value, and it's the platform. You guys require a 50-foot platform at 2% on town roads. Again, a lot of town roads, 50-foot on town roads, a lot of those is for stacking of cars, for, you know, as 20 years go by and you get more and more traffic on the roads, that you've got a platform for people to come to stop. We have 50 units in here, small development. The way I've designed this, every single cul-de-sac has homes at the end of it, unless somebody buys two or three homes and blows them out and then puts a road through, these are not going to continue on, and it's not going to add more road and traffic and circulation to it. We have about 25 feet at this location here and 25 feet at both locations. The reason for the waiver here is if I've got to bring it down and back, I don't get the back half of the project up. And if you've been on site, we do have ledge, you'll notice the notes on the plan that we have to do the surveys and that type of stuff. So, we've designed it right now as a nice balance. Cuts and fills come out almost equal, and we didn't intentionally do that, but it worked out for us, which was nice, by bringing it up and trying to look what was there for the test bits. So, again, if we can't get that, we've got to drop it down, and it drops down this whole development here. And for the rest of the development, it's 2%. We have one 5.5% that comes up, up and around the corner right here. And just so everybody understands, handicap ramps, 8%. So, 5.5, I'm not really killing it here. We also don't have any homes, driveways, that kind of stuff there, so it's nice and clean. And then throughout the rest of it, it's 2%, 2% and 2% back down, and then going the Again, we come off 2, 1, 2, 2, 2, 2, 2, and 2. So, I mean, we've really designed it nice and flat. We don't have major grades up and down, not rolling, just enough to make the water get from one point to the next and get to our catch basins, and not create pooling and those types of things on the, on the design. So, that's one of the waivers requesting. The rest of the plan set, 19 through 31, Keach-Norstrom decided that they wanted to design cross-sections last month, and we've got about 15 pages of cross-sections. So, if you'd like to go through those, I could kind of go through each one, but I think they're kind of mundane. And then under that is details. So, then the only other waiver that we're looking for is one that's been brought up by staff.
Could one just double-check with you? This is all those, despite all this, it's still a private road, is it's not? And no town responsibility? Thank you.
Correct.
Would you, would you clarify where those waiver requests were for the platform regarding the platform?
So, the location is right here.
Yeah.
And right here.
That's the only two places?
That's the only two places, that, that section right there.
Are there stop signs at both ends of Jared? Is that, is that right?
Yes.
And I had a question on that, too, with regards to the platforms that waiver. That's not going to affect the visibility out of that one house that's accessing off the main road in and out of the division, right? Off of Jared's Way, there's one house that's, driveway is on that one.
Okay, so, stop bar, stop sign right here, stop bar, stop sign right here. This house is at station 100, so it's 100 feet back from the road that's there, so no. And just so we, if you take a look at that profile, the reason I'm asking also is that if you're coming down at 2%, and then we come back up, and you'll see that 6% is where it gets to the max, it's not at 6% at 25 feet, it's at 2.5, 2.75, 3%, 3.5, 4%. So, it's not like it goes straight up after that, and there's no platform. Again, we're under 5% on this platform. It's not that it goes to 8 or 9%, and you're basically botting out. We're not doing that or anything like that. Same thing on the top side here, it rolls over to the top, comes to a stop there, and there's no, nothing there on that, so. The second waiver, was that okay?
Yes.
The second waiver is one that staff's asked for, I disagree with, but I'm going to ask for it here. It's section 7, oops, I didn't write it down right there.
19.
7, 19. If you read that with what I handed you out there, it says, "All commercial slash industrial non-residential site plans shall provide for paved pedestrian ways." I can understand with staff that they want to call this a commercial development because it's multifamily, but it's pretty clear to me that commercial slash industrial, non-residential, we're residential. But, with that said, we would request a waiver on building sidewalk within this part of the development. As you know, currently, there's sidewalk out on the main road.
Yeah.
I mean, where you walk, I mean, if you've been in developments like this, where I've lived in them, I have children, we don't walk on the sidewalks inside your own development here. You're on the 24-foot of pavement, you've got three or four cars that come by. If you guys feel that a sidewalk's necessary and want to see that internally here, we can discuss that, but it's a privately maintained road. The sidewalks aren't going to be plowed in the wintertime, not that you'd even walk on them. If you've seen a plowed sidewalk, it's very hard to walk on in the wintertime anyway. So, it's really up to the board here. I just don't feel that it's necessary inside something this small. When you, you get on your main road, you're going to want it. And when I get on my main roads and go down to school with my kids, we walk on the sidewalk. In our development, they never go on the sidewalk.
I have, I have a question. What does Parker Village have? Has sidewalks.
You have sidewalk on the main road, did we put it into the development?
A sidewalk on every road.
Yeah.
In the development, yes. One side.
Do you use it?
Some do, some don't. Of course, we don't even have any traffic there, because it doesn't go through. We wait for the train, you know, to be excited.
And what do we do, wasn't that like 50, no, was that 50? How many units were in there?
75.
75, and no traffic on the roads. So, I mean, it's, it's a call to the board. I, it's.
But I, I would think that we're trying to get in sidewalks every place, if just for the kids and the play-in and riding their scooters and.
Stan, make sure your microphone's on.
Oh, yes.
Get closer to it, you're getting a little.
Okay, thank you.
I would have to say I agree with Stan, because, I mean, you're going to build a clubhouse. People are going to go to the clubhouse and drink alcohol. You don't want them to drive their car back there, you want them to walk, and we're all being safe. Secondly, with that number of houses, I suspect sooner or later, the residents are going to ask Merrimack Transportation System to provide school buses up and down there. The last thing you want is kids standing in the road for school buses. I think you've got to have sidewalks, and it's the only thing I disagree with what you said, Matt. I'm sorry, I think sidewalks are absolute must in a development like that. Primarily, I'm thinking of the kids and school buses, but also going to the clubhouse. Sorry.
It's all right. It's your pick. Fine.
Nelson.
I'm not sorry, but I'm an advocate for sidewalks. I really think, you know, clustered development like this, where you're encouraging a neighborhood's, little neighborhood communities to build, you want to encourage walking in that area and to the clubhouse, as Alistair pointed out. So, I'd be.
Can we continue the discussion, discussion a little then on how you would, you know? I don't see a sidewalk going around the cul-de-sac and back. You know, I see a cul-de-sac on one, I mean, you see it on every single, you want it on this side and that side of the road? That would be, that's.
I would be happy with, on, on one side of the road. And actually, what we have is like a three foot sidewalk, and then a two-foot strip where they have the granite newspaper mailbox in the grass two-foot strip right in there. So, it's, doesn't have to be the biggest elaborating, no?
Not a three-foot sidewalk. I think four is the minimum, right?
Yeah, no, yeah, it's not going to be three.
Okay.
But as we get into these, I mean, what, okay, let's take this for an example. What are you seeing here, sidewalk into it? I mean, around it?
I'll give you a proposal that if you measure the road distance in each of those subdivisions, or 3A, B, C, D, you've got to provide sidewalks for at least 50% of the road length in each of those units. At least 50%. You can work out where you put it, but, you know, you're going to have kids there standing waiting for a school bus. They're not going to stop at every house, they're going to want to stop probably twice or once or twice in each of those loops, and once up them, or twice up the main drag. You've got to have facilities for kids to stand safely, so that the buses don't, you know, got a chance of picking them up without knocking them down. I really think you've got to put, the minimum of 50% of that road length has got to have a sidewalk in it. And I'd probably want both, double width on Jared Way itself, both sides on Jared Way, the rest of it, I'd go for 50%. But it's up to my colleagues may disagree with me, but that's the minimum I feel, would feel comfortable with.
It's hard to get comfortable with that much. You know, where the houses are all right adjacent to each other, I would like to see them connected, so that people can walk to their neighbor and the neighbor beyond their neighbor. That's the purpose of them.
Right. You're bringing something in and bringing it up, so you can get, you don't want them across the street? Is that what you're saying? I mean, I, this guy here wanting to get over, or this guy wanting to get to here, if the sidewalk's on this side, he walks across and walks down the sidewalk, not, it doesn't have to be on the same side of his road. Is that what you're saying? I mean, I can, I can understand with the 50%, I mean, that, that would get me close. It's a little bit more actually than 50% when you add it all up, because the road's a little bit more and stuff like that, but it would be close to being on one side.
I didn't say that was only the, that was the minimum.
No, I understand, I'm saying it would be more than that.
If my, my colleagues can twist my arm, I'll go to 100% with Nelson if he wants to.
The only, okay, let's, let's backtrack a little bit then. The only, okay, let's backtrack a little bit then. We start putting sidewalks on both sides with this type of development here, it's changing my landscaping also. So now, you know, they're getting, I can't put them in that two-foot little strip, they die. I can show you a project I'm doing Rochester, I've got four of them that are dead in that little strip, because the plow trucks come through, and the salt and everything else kills them. So all my trees now are going to get pushed back closer to the house. And in some places, there's, there's not going to be enough room for all of that. So there's going to be a little balance between it, is all I'm saying. If you guys are okay with that, I can balance between the both, because it's not a cost thing, it's just, it just has to be balanced out.
That's a worthwhile trade.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I will make sure we have sidewalks to, that people can get to from every unit, whether it's on one side or the other.
Okay.
That work? Close.
It works for me, but I'm trying to, usually you want to take a look at it, and sit down here and look at a plan, and see the drawing, and see where those, like, let me begin, though. In a subdivision this size with fifty homes, I think the numbers that we've seen in multifamily developments like this is something like point one-five or point two kids per home. So you're talking about five or eight kids in this development, if that formula holds up, and it's an accurate way to do it. And the traffic in a small development like this is not much. I don't, the point of a sidewalk is safe pedestrian travel, and I don't know that you require sidewalks in this to make it safe. However, certainly only one vote, and if the folks on the planning board want to see the sidewalks built everywhere, I think that you can do that. It's not a, it's not a bad thing to have in the neighborhood, I think I would like it if I was going to buy a house there and have the sidewalks there that they would be. I don't, I don't know that it's unsafe without them, but I'd support having them there.
There's people besides children that would like to use sidewalks.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't mean to imply that, I was thinking of the school bus comment that Alistair was making, where kids got to have a safe place to stand. No, that's the point for talking about kids, was with the respect to Alistair with his school bus issue. Anyway.
I was thinking more senior persons, like myself.
Sure. I had some friends that have one of the condos in Bradford Village, is that what it's called, it's over towards Bedford, and they have some sidewalks that kind of meander through landscape on the way in, but when you get down into the little cul-de-sac areas, they don't have sidewalks, there's not much traffic, people walk in the road. It seems to work okay for them, and didn't cause any problems or anything like that. And so that's what I had in mind when I thought a low-traffic roadway, safe pedestrians, walk wherever they want. But I don't feel that strongly about it if somebody wants to go in a different direction.
I should say, Parker Village is an over fifty-five age development. But whenever there are grandchildren, and there are grandchildren, there are a lot, they are on the sidewalk. They don't walk, it's part of their training, you stay on the sidewalk. And the men walk on the sidewalk. And a couple walks on the sidewalk. But the ladies walk wherever they want, and nobody dares to say anything. So, you know, that's just-
I'm not going to hammer the issue. I heard you guys, you know, let's get sidewalks, it's, it is what it is. It's some minor stuff, we'll work through it. I, it was my personal opinion, been doing this for seventeen years, but that's fine, you guys have been doing it a lot longer than me, so, no worries.
Desiree?
I'm on, I'm the chair for the sidewalk and by committee, so I should at least weigh in. However, kind of torn, I'm actually more with Bob on this, in that I, I'd like to see sidewalks, and there's spots that I definitely want to see it coming in off of Jared's way, when you're connecting in, before you come in there. And I'd like to see sections of it with sidewalk, like if there was, like at the bend on the, well, I don't understand how the bus stuff works so much, but if there was a spot where there was paved area where the kids could stand off the road, and it would be a good place to collect them. I've only been in Merrimack for two years, and we used to, in California, Nevada where I grew up, we used to stand waiting for buses all in one spot in a neighborhood, and they had like two or three places to pick a neighborhood up. So we would pick, well, you could do that, or you could do it just inside of it, and then that way they're not actually outside of the development. But that, you know, I'm not the one who controls how that works, but-
Every home has twenty feet wide pavement right in front of it in their driveway. Stand there.
Yeah.
Actually, twenty-four feet wide, twenty feet long.
Yeah. And then the, I guess the other comment, too, you know, doing the buffers on there, when you get the salt and the road maintenance stuff up on there, it is, it is hard to grow grass and plants up on that part of it. So I can see some of the concern with that. However, those are great for higher traffic areas. I really don't see it as a big traffic development for this. I would like to see it down lower. I would be in favor of partial, I don't even know that I need to see fifty percent personally, but definitely some areas to stand would be good for picking up a buses. That's it.
Well, how about if I throw this out there? I mean, I know where staffs review this and stuff like that, but we have not got engineering comments back from them. If we brought, you know, if you went forward and this was approved tonight, but we, with the condition that we come back in the next hearing showing where the sidewalks are going to be, I got no problem with that. It's going to take me thirty, forty-five days to wrap things up and put things together, anyway.
I certainly don't mind that approach, and I'd like to see the drawing, the drawing where the sidewalks are going to be, and it's also been sort of our preference to see things after the engineering review, although occasionally we've done them as a conditional approval as well. So, thank you for that, and I think that's a good offer to come back and show us where you decided that they ought to go, and then we can weigh in as to what we think as far as that goes. Is there any other comments, or is your presentation complete?
I'm good, yep.
Other comments or questions on the proposal other than, or sidewalks or anything else?
In general, we'll open up to other parts of the discussion, then I had a few questions as, as Matt went through it. First of all, we didn't see any architecture on this, and I don't know if we normally would see-
You should have gotten, you should have gotten some renderings that we put together, a typical unit layout that I'd put in the package.
Okay, we did not-
I didn't get one of those, but if you've got a couple to pass around, let's pass them around. While you're passing that around, I want to read into the record the letter that you gave me with respect to the clubhouse request from the condominium association. And this is a letter under the letterhead, Bowers Landing of Merrimack Two LLC, five hundred West Cummings Park, Suite sixty-fifty, Wilburn, Massachusetts. It's addressed to the community development department, and to me and members of the planning board. Bowers Landing of Merrimack Two LLC, the owner and Blanchard Point Condominiums, the association, hereby agree that in addition to the completion of fifty single-family units to be built for the site plan titled Crown Point, that the owner will declare a clubhouse to be built and access from Bowers Landing Drive. The clubhouse will contain approximately eighteen-hundred square feet, including outdoor living spaces. As agreed, and in conjunction with the input from the association, both parties agree that a pool will not be part of the owner's responsibility, nor will it be declared. Consistent with the public offering statement, the owner has yet to declare a clubhouse and related amenities with the attorney general's office. The owner hereby agrees to declare a clubhouse and related amenities, along with the submission of registration of the proposed fifty units at Crown Point. The owner also agrees to work closely with the association's board of directors in completion of this application and registration as it pertains to any common area amenities. Thank you for your consideration towards our application for an amendment to the site plan, Phase Three of Harris Pond. Sincerely, and it's signed by Robert Folsom, the managing member, and Jeff Ewing, a managing member of Bowers Landing of Merrimack Two LLC, and by Phil Duheim, the Blanchard Point Condominium Association President. It's copied to Tim Thompson and the board of directors of the condominium association. And so this letter was offered when Matt was telling us about why they developed the size and the configuration of the clubhouse.
Is this condominium association separate from the other Blanchard Point condominium association? So the associations are different, but they're going to share a clubhouse, is that what we're?
No, this association will be all the same. This will be the same as these group, this group here, but not as the garden styles that are up front. That's separate. That's got its own clubhouse up there, that's a separate group. This group here will be the townhouses plus this, which comes up to a hundred and twenty-one plus one.
Okay. These are the unbuilt, this other section's unbuilt, right?
No, these guys are all, no, that next unbuilt section will have its own also. That's separate also.
That's also separate. Okay. So you're just talking about sharing a clubhouse of these two?
There's three pods. One's here, one's over here, one's here.
Is there any clubhouse in those existing pods? I know you explained this earlier, but-
No, this, this is the clubhouse for that, this part of the-
So those three don't have any clubhouse at all, but then we're going to do Phase One, Two of this, and then build the clubhouse for everybody?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Correct.
While you're talking about clubhouses, I just want to make sure. You said you would do the clubhouse as you're phasing in A or number one?
No, no, he's going to do three A, then three B.
Three B, and then a clubhouse.
Well, I was reading, I think, in all the material you gave, that each phase would be one year apart, I mean, one year. And that's what I read in the material. So you're saying a clubhouse wouldn't be built for a couple of years anyway? And I don't agree with that.
I mean, it would probably be, I mean, it depends on how they went last, I mean, it's twelve in one phase. I mean, I know back six years ago, we were doing fifty in a year, but, you know, last couple of years, it's been ten to twelve. I mean, I don't know what the market's going to show. It's obviously on the upswing, so.
I think, I put a lot of weight and significance in the letter from the existing condominium association on this, in terms of they're working cooperatively with the developer, and they're satisfied with the current state of things with the clubhouse, especially, and this also goes for the sidewalks, in that the clubhouse and sidewalks create costs for the condominium members. And that's going to be reflected in their condominium dues. And if they've come to an arrangement with the developer that's satisfactory to them, that balances their clubhouse and sidewalks and dues, I don't have a problem with that. Do it the way they want.
I don't know why you throw sidewalks.
Well, no, I was thinking sidewalks with costs, not that there's an agreement with sidewalks at all, I'm sorry. I did, didn't mean to confuse that issue on that respect. But there's costs with sidewalks that are going to fall on the condominium owners.
Yeah, as far as what, winter maintenance?
Winter maintenance.
Winter maintenance, yeah.
All your common area members.
The same with the roads, is they have to be maintained too, so it's not just the sidewalks, it's not just-
No, no, but roads aren't optional.
The what?
The roads aren't optional.
All right. Do we, let me see. I just, I, we open for other discussions? I wanted to go back to the, to the slopes off the backside of this, are quite steep. The, looks like there's some fill in there. You answered my question about saying it's about a balance of cut and fill. And I see that there's a fence of some type along the top of the banking there. Could you just talk a little bit about that fence and how it's made?
Yes. Just so you understand, these slopes here are three to one, and then it pans out here even flatter. So I know they're kind of stacked, as they look like they go down here, but you can actually mow that slope that's there. As far as the fence that we put up there, that's a good question. What did you design there?
I think page five says proposed vinyl fence.
You got details of it also. Yeah, so proposed vinyl fence, if you go to the detail sheet.
So basically a vinyl version of split rail?
Split rail vinyl.
Pardon?
Split, split rail vinyl. It's on sheet thirty-two in the upper right-hand corner.
Okay, upper right-hand corner, okay. For two rails, or posts, post and rail type.
It's just an aesthetically pleasing deterrent. I mean, this isn't a one-to-one drop-off in this location, so it's not needed to keep them away from that for the safety, it's more aesthetically keeping them off of the slope that's there.
Okay, I just wanted to see what it would look like. I don't have a problem with that.
I have a question on, you mentioned it before, the length of the driveways.
They're all almost twenty-five feet. I said twenty because a parking space is eighteen and a half, and I wanted you to realize I had at least that. But the majority of them are twenty-five feet from the edge of the curb to the garage door, and then they're twenty-four feet wide.
Yeah, because I see some of them are different lengths.
Oh, yeah.
We can get to your thing. And I didn't read any place, the dimensions. Okay, good. House number, lot number thirty-six, way up top, oh, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, twenty-three says twenty-four foot minimum, twenty-four foot minimum. So again, I had, I knew I had over twenty, so I just, that's why I did that.
Because we have a couple that a pickup truck sticks out in the road.
Other comments or questions?
None from me, thank you.
Does the board want to vote on acceptance?
I saw in the notes that this not, complete isn't necessary since it's an amendment. No, yeah, that's the next step. Stan?
Yeah. I said I'd get back to this, parking at the clubhouse. You've got fifty houses and two other, three other parts, and you've got ten parking spaces. Doesn't that seem-
I'm building sidewalks, everybody's walking to it because they're drinking at night, they got to walk home. You guys have made that pretty clear to me. Honestly, though, if you go up to the existing clubhouse, which I've been there about eight to nine times over the last six months, I'm the only car, and then Bob pulls in, you know, there's one other car that's there. I mean, there's three cars, and that's for all those garden styles that are up there. How many units are there? It's a hundred and four right now. I've seen one person in the pool all summer long. I've seen my car and one other car there. So, I mean, we've talked with him, we've talked with the association, we felt it was adequate. I really believe now with the sidewalks, it's definitely adequate. But-
Not a problem.
Matt, this staff memo did list out a couple items that we should talk about with the phasing, parking, landscaping, density, and open space. We've kind of tangentially hit on the phasing when we were talking about when the clubhouse was going to be built, but you've got A, B, C, and D. Stan has indicated in his written materials, he saw that those were intended to be about a year apart, but I don't know if that was a definitive plan, or whether that was just some-
Which page identifies the phasing?
If you go to sheet one.
Sheet one. If you look, sheet one, Nelson. Three A, three B, three C, three D.
Sheet one.
Yes.
And then these dark black lines outline each phasing, and right in it, it says Phase Three A, says Phase Three C, Three D on the line, so you can see the side.
It's going to be together.
Just, just so the board understands, when I was here in February, the economy was a lot different. Things have drastically changed, if nobody's noticed. I mean, we're not having people in meetings and stuff like that. So the year was just at that point, we didn't know where it was going to go. We could have two phases done next spring if this thing takes off. I mean, you know, we're assuming another five to six-year run here, so I don't think it's going to be the year I was saying back in February, but we were being conservative back then.
Oh, I'm trying to do, well, the big difference is, I wasn't here in February. I was away. But the thing is that I'm just trying to help the people that aren't here to talk about it, because they haven't bought a house. That's all. And I want them to have as much protection as they can.
So with the phasing, do you intend to do the infrastructure each phase at a time, or do you intend to do the, I don't know, electrical or water or sewer for the whole project at one shot?
No, we would do each phase as it, as it came online, and we'd stop at the end of each phase for those types of utilities. However, as I said, it was very nice, is the drainage goes all in in day one, which helps me for Phase Two, Three, and Four, C, D, and E, because it's stabilized, water's flowing to it, it's not a mess, it's so much cleaner. Gets in the first phase, and you're done.
So drainage goes in the first phase?
Drainage, treatment, and four bay goes in the first phase. Obviously, there's catch basins in the next phase that aren't getting put in until they get in, but the sediment treatment, and the four bays, and the pond, and the infiltration all gets put in as Phase One.
Okay, and then everything else occurs with, as a separate phase?
And everything goes to that pond later on in each phase. The only other one is the little one up top here, and that's only for these homes in the very last phase that are collecting the drainage on the side.
Okay.
I have one question that I didn't understand. Construction of all quote, "on-street parking spaces." What are on-street parking spaces?
Where is that comment from? I mean, on-street parking is these six here, these six here, these four here, these four here, these four here, and these four in there.
Okay, so it's not actually on the road. It's where you have the six or eight?
Yeah, right, it's not parallel parking on the road, no. It's off of the main road.
Well, as you said, on-street. I didn't think there was a necessity.
When you come in to do Phase Two or something like that, you're going to do the paving for the cul-de-sac with the parking spaces, and then start building the houses around?
Yeah, I mean, when it gets paved, I mean, you got to get the gravels down and something like that, I'll probably pull a building permit out before it's paved, but before anybody gets in, they'd have to have a, they'd have to have it paved, yes.
Okay. Parking was on the staff's memo, I'm comfortable with the parking. I don't know if any other members of the board have questions about?
I had just one more question, you thought I'd forget about it, snow. What are you going to do with snow?
I think that was on Plan Five and Six and Seven, or something like that.
If you read them, sheet one, item seventeen, cloud snow shall be stored at the designated areas when the snow is stored- Cloud snow shall be stored at the designated areas when the snow storage areas are capacity. Subsequent snow should be hauled off-site.
With the snow storage areas, are filled, where are they?
They're on the plan, Stan.
They're on sheets five and six. I didn't outline it, I'm sorry. They're on sheets five and six. They are.
Little elliptical areas next to the road here and there.
Behind the parking spaces. Along the main, up in the corners here, up at the intersections here, up in this location here. I think most of us know in some of these storms now, we're contracting to have a lot of stuff moved off-site. We don't have a whole parking area like some of the shaw's that we can dump it all and lose twenty parking spaces. It would have to be moved off. And that's why the notes are there.
I know that you've got the designation of snow storage and all of that. As this project comes online, I know that a note on a plan really doesn't do a whole lot for what the association might eventually do, but I wouldn't wanna see snow stored in those parking spaces that are intended for guests, those little clusters of six here and there. And if they were unused, it would certainly be handy. I'm not sure that a note really matters, because I don't need, the association reads the notes, but at least it's something.
I see on sheet six, I see a snow storage area. And it points to a little dot. Behind the six spaces, or in front of the six spaces?
Which page are you looking at?
Yeah, right in there.
Yep, right there.
One little dot right here. No?
That dots the light.
That's parking. That's, that's for the parking. This is, the little dot, from what I understand from staff.
Between forty-one and forty-two, Stan.
There's a snow storage area.
The oval, the dot is in.
This is right there, that. That whole thing?
Yeah, that circle right there. Oh, I see what you're saying, that the circle, it's, no, that's just saying where it is. That would be kinda small.
You'd be moving that.
So Stan, are you happy about parking now? I know source, snow storage isn't really part of parking, but it kinda sorta is.
I don't think it's gonna work. And, well, but I give it the benefit of the doubt. The only thing I'll say is somebody will probably be checking to see if this parking spaces don't disappear.
Write that down.
The staff has asked us to take a look landscaping, see the, the plan close, look at it closely, decide if it, more detail is needed in terms of buffers, plants used, et cetera. I'm comfortable with the level of detail that we've gotten here with the addition of sidewalks when we get to sidewalks.
With the understanding it's gonna change a bit, perhaps to adapt to sidewalks, yeah.
Right, yes, absolutely. Does anybody else have any concern to know more detail about the landscaping plan? Applicants already indicated that they understand the situation with the density and that they've got an original total amount for their all phases, and they've gotta live within it. If they put a little more here, they got a few less somewhere else. Open spaces, the board may wish to discuss the amount of stormwater management that's occurring within the open space.
Yeah, we didn't talk much about the open space. What's the plan there? Is it just to leave it in its natural condition?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we've had now with this supervenial circum, provincial highway?
Circumference.
Yeah, whatever it is. Not coming through here anymore. We now have a substantial tree buffer that we have an impact in it. We didn't actually encroach in that. We believe we can now because it's not going forward, but we've kept everything out of that. So we've left a huge buffer again to the main road that's here. This is very consistent with what was originally proved out there. Actually, I think a lot cleaner with the cul-de-sacs and the landscaping that's gonna grow up in between those now. So, I mean, we've had to meet the drainage requirements for the new AOT. As we all know, it's changed dramatically. And I've tried to minimize the view from outside moving in here, and we've landscaped everything else from there, so. Best I could do, I balanced everything on the project throughout the last year with staff and everybody else, and this is where we're at with it. I think it gives a nice look for future down the road.
Who is the owner? Are you the, is the condominium association still the owner of that property? That opens?
Yeah.
Pardon?
That's Rob, Bob Folsom, still the owner of the property. The association does not own this piece of land. This is a convertible land there for them to develop it. The owner still owns that.
Okay, and it's being subdivided from this?
It's.
Property.
It's a, no, no, it's all, it's a condominium, the whole thing is a condo, so it's a, it's a.
The condominium association will end up owning that property?
Part of the common area?
Yes, yes, yes. And it's convertible land currently. That's what I was looking for.
I got you.
What do you mean by convertible land?
Meaning the owner can build that parcel as part of the development. It was a future phase of it. When he got the whole thing approved, it's another phase to be built.
Okay.
It can be converted to units. It doesn't have to stay open space.
Okay, alright.
Donna, did you have anything else in mind with respect to that comment about asking about stormwater management in the open spaces, or?
No, not at all, but just in terms of the phasing, I think staff was concerned that in the future, when we go out for CLO inspections in terms of phasing, what exactly is being done per phase? So are we looking for all the landscaping to be done, you know, for all those boxes that are dashed in the phasing plan? So just kind of what the board was expecting in terms of the exact phase A, B, and C.
Okay.
Yeah, so just to put on the record, the way we've designed this is that everything, you know, would be done in this phase, and each phase as it went. Landscaping goes with it, that, lighting and that kinda stuff, yeah. I mean, it sets its own site plan basically for each phase.
Okay. Is that a satisfactory answer for the record? And I think that's, as far as I'm concerned as a board member, I'm satisfied with that, that everything in that dotted line gets done together. That covers the items that are highlighted in the staff's memo, and I don't know if we have any other questions and answers, for members of the board? If not, open it up for public comment, if there's any abutters or citizens who wish to offer the board some information to consider. Seeing nobody come forward. Nope, we do have somebody coming forward. Come on. You can sit down at the table if you like, and just make yourself comfortable, introduce yourself to us, and tell us what's on your mind. Make sure that microphone's turned on.
I'm Tom Medico, and I live at Three Augusta Circle, which is in the Blanchard Point condominium Development.
I'm not sure your microphone's turned on. Can you touch that button and see if it gets brighter?
Brighter. How's that? I'll repeat it. I'm Tom Medico, and I reside at Three Augusta Circle in Merrimack. I've actually lived in Merrimack since nineteen eighty-five, so I've lived here almost thirty years. I've seen the town grown from a small town. I grew up in Connecticut in a small town, so I understand your, you know, appreciation of the buses and such. We've lived, we've lived in the condominium development for about eight years now. One of my concerns is the builder has always said, "We're going to build the condominium pool and clubhouse after we finish this building." And then they finished that building, and the pool and the clubhouse were not built. He said, "Well, I will build it after the next one," and the pool and the clubhouse were not built. Now, I understand and I appreciate that there's a letter and there's a commitment, but what happens if the builder goes bankrupt? Is there any escrow money that's going to have that pool and that clubhouse being built? That's a concern of mine. The other concern that I have is snow storage. This past winter, we had significant snow, and I had the opportunity to go over to Parker Village, which is not like this, because Parker Village is a fifty-five-year-old complex. Parker Village, I believe, has three bedrooms?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms. But it's, it's similar, but it's not the same.
Right.
The snow removal was on the cul-de-sacs, and if I recall, this past winter, I've got pictures, it was pretty heavy. So, my concern is that are these pods going to be big enough for that? And one of the comments that was mentioned by Matt was that, "Oh, snow can be taken off-site." Since I've lived there, in the eight years, snow has not been removed off-site. And if snow is removed off-site, that's an additional cost that's borne by the owners, not by the developer, but by the owners. So your concern about the future people that are gonna live there, for eight years, we've lived there, and we've borne that cost. The other concern that I have is when the planned unit development was originally proposed and approved by the state, it was approved for a hundred and twenty-one units in all townhouse styles. And at that state, the budget was put in as an approximation of what would be the cost. And that cost was, I believe, a hundred and eighty or a hundred and eighty-five dollars per unit for a hundred and twenty-one units, and that's in the state record. And that also included a pool and a clubhouse. Three years after, when the association was turned over to the owners, we got hit with a nineteen thousand dollar bill. And the reason we got hit by a nineteen thousand dollar bill was because for the first three years, we got charged a hundred and eighty dollars. But the one cost that wasn't paid was the property management fee, which just so happens to be a sister company of the developer. So three years later, we got, turned it over in January, and in February, we got hit with a nineteen thousand dollar bill. So my concern is that, how come we got hit with that? How is he going to guarantee that we're not gonna get hit with costs later on, like off-site snow removal? There's no guarantees there. Those are real concerns. Lot of people are moving out of these developments. They're, they're, they're moving out because they're going for fire sales. I'm concerned about my property values. I think these are great. There's no trees, and with our green society, I'd like to see a little bit more trees. I'd also like to see pavement that's environmentally correct. The new, the new apartments out in UNH in Durham that are right offside the main parking lot, they've got asphalt that can take oil. It's environmentally friendly. Why aren't we talking about that? We're talking about taking trees down. We're talking about sidewalks. The sidewalks are important. We have neighborhood kids in our development, and when those cars go through, they go through at fifteen to twenty miles an hour. If you get hit by a car going fifteen, twenty miles an hour, you get hurt. When I was growing up, I walked a half a mile and stood out front of two horses. Now, in Merrimack, they stop at every house. And I know that because my kids live up on Parker Drive, and they stop at every single house. They don't come on our property, but yet our property is right away, and our property has speeders, and the police really can't do much about it. And they've been called there numerous times. So there's a lot of safety hazards. So I would really strongly suggest that we do have proper lighting, and we do have sidewalks. In addition to that, the lighting, when we first moved in there, we asked for more lighting. The answer was, "This is all the lighting we need to provide." At nighttime, there is not enough lighting. And then back in February, when Matt came up and talked about sidewalks and having the ability to walk to a retail outlet, the retail outlet that's there is Dunkin' Donuts, and it's about three-quarters of a mile walk to a mile walk. The sidewalk stops right on this thirty-six acres and ends where the garden-style property, which he owns, begins. There is no sidewalk there, and there's a huge curve in the road, and I can tell you, many times, people have almost gotten killed there. But of course, they haven't. But they've almost gotten killed. So there is no sidewalk to walk from my house to Dunkin' Donuts. Zero sidewalk. And I think in February, it was stated that there was. The other thing is that back in February, I think it was Mr. Millens, you had asked about the concern about the school bus service. And I think that one of the things that was asked was, they would go to at least the Board of Education and ask about that. And I, I didn't hear that addressed. I heard, I heard that it would be nice to have, but I didn't hear that anybody actually went to the Board of Education and addressed that. And I know Ms. Fault had said that she wasn't really understanding what the rules and regulations were for bus stops. So I would contend that we should probably get an idea of what the town does and doesn't do as far as schools, because one of the nice things that would be great there is in a lot of communities, they have little huts. You go down to North Carolina, and they put everything right in. That's what they make 'em do. And they put little putts in there for the kids to stand, for the rain, for the snow, for the walking, and we do have kids. We are not a fifty-five-year-old place. We've got kids, we've got grandkids, we've got more kids than probably a fifty-five-year-old development. In fact, on Augusta Circle, we have a neighbor that lives at number thirty-six or thirty-five, and they actually put out a sign with a little, guy with a little flag says, "Please slow down." That's not enforceable. People don't slow down. So those were a couple of my concerns, and that's about it. So thank you.
Thank you. Will you stay and see if there's any questions from the board for you? I don't know if there are any, but.
Can I give him a couple of answers, if it would help him?
Of course.
As far as, as far as school buses are concerned? As far as school buses are concerned, that is, the school district effectively identifies which children are going to which schools, and depending whether they're going to, I don't know where your, small ones go, I would think it'd be Thornton's and the balance wherever else they go. The school board works what kids are available and then submits to the bus company, which is an independent organization. And together, they work out how to pick up those kids, because it's a state requirement, that no child shall walk more than a mile and a quarter. And I'm gonna assure you, very few towns even enforce that. They're normally looking at much less. So it also has something to do with, the state also says that no child may spend more than, and I think it's an hour and a quarter on a school bus considering out and back. So it's, it's, once a child is registered with the school district, the school district and the bus company works out how to pick 'em up. As far as your idea about a, if you like, a hut for the kids to stand in, there are, there is one at the other end of town. One of the, the, I think, developments at the far end of town has got just that. They have huts for the buses, but that's up to the developer. It's not up to the bus company. Just one other thing, just to make a point to you, and you've talked about the UNH porous pavement, porous asphalt, which is what you're talking about. Just understand that if you have porous asphalt, you have to spend a great deal of money, and you were concerned about cost falling on the owners. You actually have to provide that that doesn't get blocked with sand and everything else that comes down in the winter. So whilst I personally love porous asphalt, I know there is a, quite a significant cost in terms of machinery that you have to have to keep it clean, and beating, you have to clean it on a regular basis to ensure it doesn't get blocked, because otherwise, it's just a waste of money.
I think I'd throw, I'd throw a couple of cents in on the porous pavement, because we do have some of that around, and we've talked about it before. It's generally for parking lots, like wide expanses of pavement where you don't have the ability for the drainage to come off the side and get into the grass and into things like that. I don't know that I've seen a proposal to use porous pavement on this kind of a configuration with roadways as opposed to Shaw's parking lot or something like that.
Yeah, the only reason I, the only reason I brought that up is my daughter lives in the facility that's brand-new, and it's actually multi-use just like this. There's apartment style, garden style, there's townhouses that are connected, and then there are individual pods like this. It's right on the, it's, it's right on one of the far, as soon as you come off Route Four and you go down, there's the barn for the horses on the left. It's that parking lot, I think they call it the west parking lot.
You do.
And it's a new development. And they're, they're just like this, garden-style townhouses and these, and there are individual parking spaces right in front. It's kinda neat.
As I'm sure you know, sir, the university's not so worried about cost as you might.
But it's private. Those aren't university-owned, they're private.
Oh, they're private.
They're a developer.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
First of all, I think I wanna say that many people that buy into developments like this don't understand, including myself, the costs that are involved. When we started, we were paying a hundred forty dollars a month on a condo fee, but we didn't have, and the developer was taking care of the two biggest expenses, snow plowing and landscaping. Then when the association started, you had to pay for that. And to pay for that, it jumps up another sixty dollars, and it just keeps going. So he wasn't, they're not doing anything wrong. But a couple weeks ago, I saw a development in Nashville being advertised for condo fees at eighty-eight dollars a month. It is not practical. You get what you're paying for. You have to pay it. People wanna see nice grass, you have to pay for the water. And you have to have a good management. The thing that we have, I like, we have a contractor for snow that has a big front-end payloader, a big job, and he gets the snow. Last year was the first year in five years that he did take some off the property, because he was preparing for the next snowstorm. We got another piece of snow, where do you put it? And because we have a little bit more room, we have a few areas that don't have electrical boxes or foam boxes, and they dump the snow on that, on that grass. So it's, it's like common sense. So it's like common sense. It's like, geez, I have to think about it, and I've been a president in Parker Village, the association, for five years. And everybody just looks at, they just want it, but they don't think how they have to pay for it. And I'm pretty sure that it's the same way everyplace. I was glad to hear that you weren't, or the new development didn't want a pool, because that's a big, big expense, a big expense. And, you know, how many people that live there actually going to use it? It's people that get brought in by friends.
Right. Well, actually, I've lived actually in plan unit developments for fourteen years, and I've served on boards in both. And to Matt's point, when he said the other association, the other association is not a owner association, it's an apartment complex. It's not a owned association. And in the last year, the developer actually put landscaping in outside the pool, and there's a lot more than one or two cars in that pool, because I go right by that. Because they close Manchester Street off, I go by that pool every day. And on average, there's like five or six families having fun and enjoying it. So, you know, we can all have our own opinions about a pool, and they're not going to build it, and that's, that's, that's fine. But I can tell you that there's more than one or two cars over at that clubhouse, and that in a clubhouse, in a condominium that's owned, more people will be using that, that, because they have a vested interest. It's part of their property value. People that rent apartments, they're there for what, eighteen months, and then they leave? We actually bought these places. We have mortgages on these places. We have a vested interest in these places. It affects our property value. So to kind of just scoff off only one or two people who are going to be at the clubhouse, that's not true. It's just not true. I mean, a lot of clubhouses, they might make centralized trash removal there, recycling. I've seen that down in the south. A lot of times, associations will have yard sales or benefits, and they use these parking lots for things like that. Right now, we do not have the ability to have any of that, because we have no clubhouse or any extra space. And from what I gather here on this proposition, we have sixty-four units built, he's proposing fifty. That's a hundred and twenty-four, not a hundred and twenty-one. So I know back in February, one of the concerns that you guys had was, where are you getting that land from? Well, he's getting that land from making the clubhouse smaller, which supposedly the association voted on, which I wasn't aware of that. So, you know, those are, those are concerns of mine. It has nothing to do with whether it's going to be built, or whether it's going to be to zoning and to code and all that other stuff. But, you know, you're talking about people's properties. So that's pretty much all I had to say, but thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens or abutters who are condo owners, people within the development who wish to offer the board any information? Going once, going twice, oh, one more. Please come forward. You don't have to be brief. Say what's on your mind.
I already know this lady.
Take a minute to sign in.
She walks wherever she wants to walk. I saw her over the head.
I raised four signs. I can do anything I want. My name is Elaine LaValle, and I am a resident of Blanchard Point Condominiums I bought in 2007. I live on Twenty-One Esquire Lane. And being a condo owner is a little different than owning a home, and there is a lot of homework to be done for people who want to own condos. I did some, not all. Some of it's been baptism by fire. Blanchard Point has had its issues, but it's a really nice community. It's a young community, and with that comes some growing pains, and I think that's what we're feeling, is the growing pains. I am a Board of Director member, and I can honestly say that since I've been a member, which was January of last year, we have put things to vote to our unit owners so that we can have that input. And it's just difficult, because you need people to attend meetings, and you need people to fill out surveys, and you need people to give the answers. Otherwise, you're going with the majority rules, and if you didn't participate and be part of the majority, then you didn't have a voice. So, you know, not everything's been perfect, but with regards to the pool, if you read the fine print, and when I bought, I did, and the fine print did say might be built. It didn't say necessarily that it would be built. And that went to a vote to the unit owners, and the majority said, no, we don't want a pool that has to be trusted four times a day, that's going to cost a lot of money. Although, I would say the majority of us would like it, we just don't want the cost associated with it. With regards to the clubhouse, that we went back and forth with. I mean, some of us would have liked it immediately, but when you look at the cost of furnishing it, heating it, lighting it, and everything else, it seemed to make more sense to bring more unit owners on before we actually, you know, incurred that cost. So that's where we're waiting for that phase, you know, three-B to happen. Although, you know, we've been in communication with Bob. Bob had a reception for homeowners to, so he could show these plans and explain things. And, you know, he has even said, if the condo association chooses to have it done a little bit sooner, that's negotiable, if that's something that we want. So, you know, it would be no later than Phase Three-B, but, you know, he said he would be flexible with that. Can't always believe what you hear. It's true. I mean, it's just the way of life. We all have to be reasonable. With regards to sidewalks, we do have sidewalks. They don't have any grass. They're just kind of like, they're kind of like angled down, at least in my neighborhood. They, you know, they, they flow into the driveways and everything. They're just a little bit raised, and those are nice. They're very nice, you know, I think, I dare to say that most people would like some continuity of that, but the fifty percent certainly seemed reasonable, and I'm sure that can be negotiated out. I'm appreciative of your time, and I just want to say that I think it's going to be a great development. I think the growing pains are, you know, again, going to subside as we get bigger, and we can kind of work together as a community, and I think the clubhouse will be nice to bring all of us together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaValle.
The only thing I'll say on your clubhouse...
Yes.
And I've been saying it all day.
The only thing?
The longer you wait, less chance you have. If you have to get it done...
Well, no, because you're going to put it in your things that what's going to be built.
If they never build Phase B.
Yeah. I think, given the fact that we have a neighbor called Hayden Green, that they've been selling like hotcakes, and they're a single level four, and not everybody wants to be in a fifty-five-plus, and the economy is changing, I think we're pretty optimistic about that. So...
Certainly has been lots of parties that are optimistic about building residential in Merrimack lately.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else? Anyone else, any abutters, citizens wish to weigh in? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for the board to deliberate on any of the matters. We do have two waivers to consider, which is the sidewalk waiver and the...
K waivers.
The little segment of Jared Way with the slope at the intersections. Nelson?
Well, I will make a motion, Mr. Chairman, at your request. I would make a motion that we not grant the sidewalk waiver.
Okay. Motion by Nelson to not grant the sidewalk waiver?
Second.
Second. I think that the applicant's already indicated that they've got an intent to build it, so in essence, I don't know if the applicant withdraws its waiver rather than... Would you, if the applicant preferred to have it withdrawn?
Okay.
Oh, the waiver.
Okay. Then I'll make another motion to waive the K factors and the platform requirements on Jared Way.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Jim.
I think that the applicant suggested that the board consider a waiver subject to CLDs weighing in on it.
Okay.
To use the two standard recommendations, waiver factor.
Do you have the staff memo that's got the statutory criteria in it?
Sorry, I have to find the words, but basically the, thank you.
I think that the applicant actually outlined statutory criteria in its letter asking for the waiver, which...
I think, I think in the applicant...
It's on that cover letter that I sent.
On this letter.
Would you like me to read it?
Got it.
I think Nelson's got it here.
I got one now. Okay. Okay. Because strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Due to the high amount of ledge on site and the amount of extra blasting that would be required to meet this requirement would create an unnecessary hardship in granting a waiver for a private road that would not be extended is not contrary to the spirit of the regulations.
Okay, that was Nelson's motion. Desiree, did you make the second?
I will make the second.
I'm sorry. Alistair made the second, but we'll put Desiree down for it.
I'm quite happy with that. Totally happy with what Nelson said.
Okay. Stan?
Speaking on the motion...
Please.
I really don't have anything against it right now, but I'd like to see what our consultants say about the proposal. I condition that they say it's okay, I'll go along with that. So, because what do I know? So...
That's already covered with, in the, in the staff's report.
Okay.
The staff's conditions of approval include one that says that they'll respond to all of the forthcoming comments from...
Item seven, applicant shall address forthcoming comments from the town's peer review consultant, CLD.
And so they'll have to address those regardless of the waiver.
That's all I was interested in, is this wasn't just a hundred percent approval, and someone else was going to look at it.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of granting the waiver per the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five, zero, zero to grant the waiver. We don't have the waiver for the sidewalks anymore. Are there any of the other items that have been suggested by abutters in terms of a hut for kids to wait for the bus, or any of that kind of thing, something the board wishes to take up and consider, debate?
Well, I heard, I heard the word salt mentioned once, and, but I also read that they're going to be before the Conservation Commission, so I'm sure that'll be taken up there. At least, I hope it will.
Not necessarily. I don't see why you should say that, Stan. I think we would be within our rights to say that any snow clearance, any snow and icing shall conform to the Green Pro standard, which we have set for other organizations.
I don't have a problem with that. Long as we are the Conservation Commission addressing.
Well, let us address it.
We've got to, because the Conservation Commission is advisory. Although we put that they're going to respond to the recommendations of the Conservation Commission, let's just go ahead and deal with that situation.
So can I make two additions therefore to the letter put together by Donna Bowley from September the fourth, two thousand fourteen? Yeah, September already, didn't we? One is that the, the association and the developer will arrange that snow clearance, removal, treatment shall conform with the Green Pro, be done by a contractor who conforms with the Green Pro standards, which is the latest thing that's been pushed together by the, initially by UNH, but has been basically adopted. And secondly, that the, there's got to be an item that says that the clubhouse will be constructed after Phases Three-A and Three-B are completed and before they start Three-C.
Okay, so...
That was a motion.
And that's a motion.
So it's a motion to grant final approval subject to the staff's conditions with the addition that snow management will be pursuant to the Green Snow Pro program, and that the clubhouse will be built after Phase Three-B, if not sooner. After Three-B, if not sooner. Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bonaslawski. Any other discussion? Were there any other conditions or recommendations that we've discussed that we want to make sure we capture?
What, how's the sidewalk part of it going to be? Are we not, we don't want, we're not worried about seeing it ahead of time, then?
The applicant has offered to come back and see us with the sidewalks, and so we should put that as a condition of approval, that the applicant will, as after peer review or, when would we want to do that? Matt, you have an idea?
What's your first hearing in next month?
It would be the first Tuesday of November, of October.
So I'd say I'd like to come back at that hearing and show you the plan. I mean, I'll have it to them next week.
Yeah, October seventh.
Let's go, October seventh.
October seventh.
October seventh.
October the seventh.
So the applicant, there's another condition added to the staff's recommendations that the applicant will turn October seventh to provide the board with a drawing of the sidewalk layout.
Okay.
Is that consistent with your motion, Alistair?
Yes, I'm very happy with that.
Consistent with your second, Mr. Bonaslawski?
Yes.
Any other conditions or recommendations that the board wishes to bring up and discuss?
Well, just the only thing on the sidewalk, it'll give you a chance to see if you could get a, a nice little flow around instead of chopping it in pieces, that it could happen. I don't think you could make the whole thing in one, one circle, but...
I have no idea what you mean.
Give it your best shot.
I have no idea what you mean. I'm not sure if you've helped the applicant at all.
I got it. You know, there's areas here where maybe I can put it on this side here, outside of the building.
He's heard what we're talking about.
So we'll try to keep the sidewalk in continuous pieces if we can. Any other comments or questions by members of the board? Donna, have we satisfied all the things that we need to discuss?
I think so.
I'm sorry, Zina, what? On adding the October seventh sidewalk issue or the...
Yes, three.
Not, not yet on the motion, on the vote, but there's one imminent. If there's no other comments by members of the board, all in favor of the motion with all of the conditions and the three added tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Sorry, what was it?
Can I get aye?
Which one do you want?
I'm sorry.
In favor?
Yes.
Okay. Five, zero, zero to grant final approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt, very much for your presentation.
For your presentation.
Have a good night.
It was a great presentation.
Item number five on our agenda is G-Nassar Realty LLC. Is the applicant and owner review for consideration of a six-month extension to comply with conditions of an approval granted by the planning board on February eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, for a site plan proposing to construct a five-hundred-and-thirty-square-foot doughnut shop addition with a drive-through and related parking at seven-fifteen Daniel Webster Highway. The parcel is located in the C-two General Commercial District, tax map seven-E, lot ten, and fifty-four dash one. Donna, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Not at this time. It's all in Steve Peaches's letter dated August thirteenth.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Stan?
Can I make a motion?
You certainly can.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to grant the request for reinstatement of conditional final approval and a six-month extension.
Does it require reinstatement in, or just the extension, Donna? Just the extension? They don't require reinstatement, so they're just looking for the extension.
Okay.
Is there a second for Stan's motion?
Absolutely.
I'm glad I was able to twist your arm.
What's that? Steve, you feel like you got to have something to say, or you...
You're going to put it to the vote, Mr. Chairman, legally? Before you go, Steve, just, just let it get to the vote.
Oh, okay.
Well, the only question I had, I had a question of my own motion.
Please.
If there was, how do we deal with the general public if they want to make a comment on this?
We then really don't do public comment with respect to extensions of prior approved plans, so...
Okay, that's all.
Unless you want to really weigh in.
No, don't.
All in favor of granting the extension, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five, zero, zero. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you for coming, Steve.
Item number six on the agenda is Auto Fair Realty 2 LLC. As the applicant and owner, and Helios Investments LLC as the owner, review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for a site plan to construct a 2,095-square-foot car rental facility and outdoor vehicle storage parking. The parcel is located at 302 Continental Boulevard in the R Residential in Oxford Conservation Districts, tax map 2B, lot 32. Donna, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Not at this time.
I will note that we've received a couple of communications from the butters, which I will read into the record at the appropriate time in our review of this. Donna, please don't let me forget to read those into the record. And with that, let's hear from the applicant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Katie Weiss. I'm with Bedford Design Consultants. Here with me tonight is Mike Cheever from Archon Group. He did the lighting plan, and he is also the architect who's working on the Harley, well, the Auto Fair Volkswagen next door. So he's involved with this. So, microphone. Okay, so as you know, we were here earlier this year for the Auto Fair Volkswagen, which is next door to the piece that we're going to be talking about. They're doing the renovation on their building. And this project is kind of an associated use with that piece. The site that we're looking at is on Continental Boulevard. Right here is Route 101A, Continental. Natta Cook Road comes up and Dead End's right here, Innovations is right here. So the lot itself is zoned residential, and we have a use variance from 2004 that's still in effect. So we're allowed to do a car rental and storage on the site, which is what we're proposing. Next to us, I printed out an aerial so you could see, there are three residential lots. One here, here, and here. This one, I don't think there's a building on. And we don't abut this one, I believe. And over here is the Home Depot. So I know today we'll be talking a little bit about the residential units and this being zoned residential and how those two impact each other. So sheet two is the existing conditions plan. The site, as I said before, is on Continental Boulevard. Continental Boulevard, where our site is, is a limited access highway, so the DOT takes care of it. They do the plowing and such. The site, there's a house on the site and a barn. We're going to be keeping the house, raising the barn. And we're going to keep the existing entrance dry, but we're going to modify it a bit, make it a little wider. The site is pretty steep at the front. If you go by, there are some trees and things, it's kind of hard to tell what's going on up there. So it's pretty steep at the front, then it flattens out, and then it gets a little steep towards the back again. The back part is wooded, and the front part is kind of scrub brush, but kind of wooded. The sewer and water come to the site, to the existing house. So we have both of those, and obviously electricity. So we are proposing a 2,000-square-foot rental office for car rentals. Parking for the rental cars is around the building as well as parking for customers. The driveway, we widened, as I mentioned before, it's 24 feet wide now, allows two-way traffic to come in and out. And the existing house will be remaining. As you travel up the site, this area over here is a proposed parking lot for Auto Fair, for employees and extra, if they have extra people who need cars taken care of, they can put them over here if they're not picking them up till the next day. And in between the lots, as we talked about and when we were here for Auto Fair before, there's a sidewalk, there's a stairway that connects the two in between. Okay, maybe I don't have it. All right, grading plan. The driveway is 8%, comes up 8% levels out here where the building is going to be. And then it comes up again at 5% or so to the large parking areas. The lower half of the site, all the water is captured in catch basins and is treated in underground storage areas, detention areas, here. All the water on the top of the site is caught in sediment four bays and then treated over here in underground detention. Part of the driveway and any excess overflow from this large area at the top will go down here to another underground storage facility. And both this storage and the storage facility will outlet to the drainage on DOT through the swales. There's one swell going in this direction, another one going in that direction. We haven't quite worked out which direction they're going yet, but we have been talking to DOT about how they would like the drainage taken care of. Because I believe that the drainage on this side goes to 101A, and this side goes in that direction. So it's two separate areas. Landscaping. We provided buffers along here for this abutter. I believe it meets the landscape regulations, but I believe we're asked to look at it again, so we'll do that. And we've kept some of the existing trees here. And along this edge, we've added more buffering along with the existing trees that are there. There are, I forgot to mention before, there's little bits of wetland in this corner that are on the butters, but there's little bits that come into our site.
Excuse me, could you tell me what sheet you're on?
I'm sorry. I'm on sheet six of 13.
Six?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. We have some trees coming up the driveway. We've got, what kinds do we have? Pin oaks and fall Fiesta maples. All the plants along the edges are evergreen as required by the regs. And in a bit, Mike's going to talk about lighting, but I just want to mention the permits that we're applying for. We're applying for the DOT for new curb cut, well, the same curb cut location, but it's a different use, so we're applying to them. Alteration of terrain, we're about ready to submit for. We're going to the Conservation Commission on Monday to talk to them about the Green Snow Pro. We're going to need a sign variance because we're in a residential zone. So we're going to be applying for a sign variance that's a little bit bigger than what's allowed, because right now it's like two by three, I think is as big as it's allowed. And we've been asked by the town to get an access easement in between the two places because they're being used co-jointly, and the same thing with the sidewalk. We'll be doing that. And a waiver for sidewalks. There's a couple of reasons for that. It's very steep in the front of the site, and there's DOT drainage swales there. So putting a sidewalk in would impede those swales. And because it's a limited access, I don't know if that's something that can be done because they would be in charge of maintaining it. I don't know how that would work. So it would have to be talked about if that's something that you really wanted sidewalks. And lastly, elevations.
Can you point before you flip the page?
Sure.
I know that you're going to go get a variance for signs, but where is your sign going to be?
The sign is actually just on the building. I believe there's a picture of a freestanding sign in the design, but that's not happening. It's right in the front of the building, on the building itself, so I'll show you that in a second.
That's the only sign that you're going to put on it is on the building itself, nothing on the?
There may be like an entrance sign out front, but nothing, just like a little "enter here" type of thing, but no. Okay, elevation. So this is the front elevation. This faces Continental Boulevard. And this is the side that faces north, which would be to the right of the plan. And this would be facing Auto Fair. And then this is the back of the building. And I do have a colored rendered elevation. It was from an earlier versions, but it has colors and things, so you can see what they're looking for, but the location of the doors and windows aren't quite correct. So the typical green. And then they've got stone in the front. I'm not sure what the materials are. That was one of the comments that was requested by the planning staff. And that's it. So if Mike wants to talk about lighting, if you have any questions about lighting, we can do that now.
Hi, my name is Mike Cheever. I'm an architect, New Hampshire architect. I work for Auto Fair. I'm not involved in the Enterprise Building, but I am here representing Auto Fair for what they're looking to do in the back of the lot. They partner with Enterprise as a, to provide the customers rentals. So what we're looking to do back here, as Katie said, is get our employees principally back up in this lot here. And this area here is intended to be a fenced-in storage lot. And so in, you know, my input in the design here is that we, when we were here earlier, we were hoping to get a little better connection between the two properties, but the grades and the ledge turned to win the day on that one. So it is principally employees that will get up and up. And obviously, this will substantially relieve and give them a lot of flexibility on how they can use the front property and use it the way you people, well, as everybody expects them to, because they want to use it responsibly. The property, again, Auto Fair will be leasing this. The two properties are owned by the same person. I'm not quite sure why there are easement requirements for the sidewalk or the drive here. But then again, I'm not a lawyer either, so I'm not quite sure how that.
It may be in terms of future use, if one of the lots is sold, then they become separate.
Well, what I was asked to do, all right, other than give a little guidance on what we've done previously, and I can answer questions about how we've built storage lots for Auto Fair in the past. This essentially has an eight-foot chain link fence around it, and it has a motorized gate here. And there is a little key box that, you know, stores all the keys for the cars and, you know, you need a code, so on and so forth to get into it. This is all, we also have security cameras mounted to watch over the lot here, and there'll be some backup in here. In terms of putting the lighting plan together, the plans haven't caught up with, haven't quite caught up with what is shown on the lighting design. But I thought that the board would be more interested in trying to downplay the number of lighting poles here because we really don't need, you know, what we have over here. In fact, we don't really want to call attention to this property back up here. So I tried to do it with as few poles as possible, which, you know, which essentially just put a couple down, put a couple down the middle. It makes a couple of bright spots, and it falls away very quickly as you get around the edges. This lot does not conform to a parking lot minimum to maximum ratio, as it's noted in the, in the comments by the staff. And it's kind of a hybrid because it's not, it's not really just a storage lot because there is activity with them moving the cars back and forth. I thought this scenario was best because it essentially puts, well, aside from limiting the number of poles, it, the light falls off very quickly as you get around, as you get around the outside edges. In terms of shielding it from the neighbors, the tree line and the extra landscaping that we're adding in here, I think also goes far to that. This particular plan shows 12 pole locations in lieu of something more.
How tall are your poles?
Every pole here is 20 feet. The lighting fixtures are intended to be the same LED fixtures that we're using on the lot next door. By comparison, this one is in, this one is in compliance. But as you can see, it adds quite a few more poles around something we really don't want to, you know, we really don't want to call attention to it.
Does the public go into that lot, or is that?
No, no. It's employees only, and you have to, you have to have knowledge of the key, of the code box to be able to get through the gate.
So limited access then.
Right. Well, in fact, anything beyond up here is really limited access. This is employee storage, or as Katie said, if there's a service car that's, you know, they have to wait for a part or whatever, you know, an employee will take that and put it up here so that it isn't down in the, you know, where we're tighter. But aside from that, there really is nobody other than Auto Fair personnel from here up.
Are you going to use security cameras to protect the property up there?
Yes.
How much lighting do you need to make the security cameras work?
Well, traditionally, traditionally, we've been looking for about an average of about two and a half foot candles, and they can get down to, get down to about .4 for us to really be able to see it.
So the lights are going to need to be on 24 hours?
That is normally what we do.
Okay.
I have a question on the employees parking lot?
Yes, sir.
Does that stay on all night, or is that shut off?
Well, that, that actually, we could, we could shut that off.
Well, let me, let me tell you what I'm looking for. I'm looking at employee safety. If at night they're going back to their car, is there going to be enough light out of those two poles?
Oh, well, no. Back here, we meet, we meet all the ratios. It was here, it was on.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying.
Yes, no, this, this is a normally lit parking lot.
Okay, because I'm more concerned with an individual than a car, okay? And that's all I was looking at.
I mean, the one, the one thing after, after doing this, you know, we didn't model the lights that also occur here, but I may add some step lighting going up those, going up those steps.
Thank you.
Nelson?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. The ratios, the uniformity ratios that he refers to that are in our regulations were derived for parking lots for commercial uses, where the public would be accessing their cars. A supermarket parking lot, or a Home Depot parking lot, something like that, where there's people coming and going, and where you want to have uniformity for, for safety and security. And I think that we could be justified in wavering it in this situation, given the peculiarities of this lot, where it's really their only, only their employees if they're comfortable with that.
I certainly agree with the logic. Donna, do you think that it requires a waiver? Or is it inapplicable here because it's not a parking lot open to the public?
I would say since I don't think our regs specify if it's open to the public or not, if you just want to grant the waiver to be on the safe side.
She's correct. We didn't specify that because I think we didn't think about this type of lot when we wrote the regulations.
Okay.
Do I need to formally ask for one, or write, write you a letter to ask for one?
No, you can certainly ask for one orally while you're here making your presentation. But Alistair, I think you have a question.
Could I, can I sort of change the topic a little bit?
Yes.
Let's go to the two private residences which are down there to the, in the lower right. What are they going to see? Are they going to just see trees? Are they going to be able to see that fenced-off area with cars in it? And I have a reason for saying this.
I think, I actually think she, she knows the property better than I do, and how dense, how dense the underbrush is in here. And she did the landscaping to try to reinforce the underbrush.
Sure. Katie, also give us a sense of the distance between the homes and the lot and lighting fixtures.
Just grab a scale. Okay, the distance from this house to the parking lot in the back is about 180 feet, a little bit more than that. And from this residence to the parking lot is 140 feet. The difference in elevation here, let's see, this building's about 220, and the parking lot is about 228. So this parking lot's about eight feet higher than this one. And the buffer that is proposed at the moment between the two is 40. And the buffer that is proposed at the moment between the two is 40 feet, looks like?
How much?
40 feet.
40 feet.
On our property.
But is the buffer what I would call high wood, woods and trees, or is it basically undergrowth?
I'm, I'm sorry, I haven't been out to the site, the, I don't know that, but we can certainly check if you would like.
The reason I'm saying this, and I'm speaking from the experience of Best Ford, when they put their similar parking lot at the back up, it was offensive, and in fact, I was, I was in a butter at that point, industrial abutter. But we insisted that they put slats, plastic slats, green slats, inside the chain-link fence, so that the whole thing sort of merged into the background. The last thing I think the abutters want to do is see a load of cars stacked. So I am certainly going to suggest to you that we want to see slating inside that chain-link fence.
That's not a problem.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I said, Donna, not a problem, so.
Thank you.
I think you've also got your landscape plan is sheet six.
Yeah, but it's not clear whether the landscape, is this high or this high?
Well, I'd like to comment, I don't know what it's going to mean, my comment, but I'll just comment. You get eight-feet difference in elevation between the houses and the lot.
Yes.
But there's another 20 feet going up.
Yes, the pole's another 20 feet.
So I'm just worrying about the overflow into the residential area.
I think that comes from the lighting plan, though. That's going to tell us how much candle power is coming off of the edge of the property.
Right, and it's at zero at the property line.
Can you see the yellow very well?
Yes.
The yellow, the yellow, excuse me. Beyond the light, the yellow, there is no light. The, the yellow represents the edge at, at .1-foot candles.
Okay.
It's a little, a little different in, a little different in this one. This one was modeled using house-side shields here. This is what happens if you don't use the house-side shields.
So even though there's no, there's no fallout, you're not going to be able to be in one of those two houses or on their property, close to the house, and look up and see the light on the stick, even if it's not blasting light out at you, you're not going to see the actual light at all?
Yes.
Yeah, you should shield the fixtures like they did up at the Outlet Mall, so that they don't have any...
Spill.
It's not spill, because he's right that the light stops there, but that you can't see the fixture.
Yeah. If you look at the Outlet Mall, they put in things to, so that the, the houses below couldn't see the lights, so.
Okay. Well, that, that, one of the, one of the beauties of, of, or at least my experience so far, you know, this LED technology is a little new, but they are, they are fairly well-contained in their, in their beams.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And, and this particular manufacturer may, you know, have some, some kind of blinder that can be put on, and we'll certainly look, we'll certainly look at that.
Could the...
It got a little cap on it, so it's not shooting way up.
Yeah, don't shoot up, shoot down, but could the three light poles in that parking lot be, uh, where's the north, south, east, and west in this?
Pushed to the right.
North is that way.
Down lower on your drawing to the west, and then pointed away from these folks' home towards the Home Depot. So you locate the poles where Katie's hand is, and, yes, exactly. Is that something that's feasible to do, so that they don't have light pointed in their direction?
Well, actually, in this particular model, the power of these LEDs, there's 160 in each of them, right? This is modeled, this is modeled with the same powered light, and when they're mounted here, right, it throws about two in there. So this is actually backwards of the one you saw before. The, the center of this parking lot is dark, and the edges are bright, right? It's because the LEDs do shoot so straight down. And here, here what happens?
Is there a way to control the direction of them, so they're not down, but they're actually directional?
Well, not in this fixture, but they actually do make LEDs that you can direct.
I, I mean, I want to be satisfied that the, that the neighbors aren't going to get any light in their house, and, you know, if we put some condition of approval that says you got to modify them if it turns out that you have light visible, that's kind of a pain for you guys. I don't know if it's easier to sort that out now. With the Outlet Mall, they did have to go back and make some revisions to their light fixtures, because they promised to produce a result, and it needed to have some modifications to do it. Seems to me that's a more difficult thing than to figure it out in the beginning, but...
Mr. Chairman, has this had a peer review? Have CLD reviewed this? They will examine the fixture. You, you've identified your fixtures, right?
Yes.
That's part of the requirement.
Yeah, the, the, what I haven't gotten into, Donna, are the light fixture cuts themselves.
That's what you need, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, that can be put together.
Yeah, CLD is reviewing this, but I don't believe we've gotten their comments yet.
But he, he said they don't have the fixtures either.
Right, so we can send those.
We need to send those over and have them review it.
Right.
And see if they have any recommendations in that line.
Yeah, I think that that's a good way, good approach to it, is get that information to them.
Have, have, have any of you experienced the difference between a parking lot done with LEDs versus the metal halights?
We've approved some recently, they're very nice.
It really is striking, you know, the cutoff on, on those light fixtures.
No question, I agree with you there. So where, what is it, 180 feet to one home and 140 feet to the other? Elevated a little bit up on the home to the south, but...
Are any of you neighbors, so you can speak to how thick the woods are there?
Hang on, let's wait till we get to the public hearing part. I don't want to cut you off, but I want to make sure we do it, follow the procedure. All of that now is wooded area, and you're going to leave it that way?
So the existing tree line, as we surveyed it, there is other things in here, but it's not what we consider the tree line, which is mature growth. This is existing here. So here, even though there's stuff growing, it's not actually a tree line. And then it comes up like this, and along the top, so right here, we are cutting trees to put this parking lot in.
And then otherwise, you're leaving everything alone?
Sorry.
Actually, show the area.
The area, okay. All right. Where is it?
Actually, the other side of it was pretty good, too, for explaining what you're trying to explain.
So the wooden, you can kind of see the tree line here, and we're going to be taking out this portion to put in the parking lot. So this is going to pretty much stay the same here and along here, but in here, we'll be taking out trees.
Does the elevation or wetlands or anything prevent you from putting that parking lot more towards Home Depot?
This is where it starts climbing up steeply, so as we do that, then big retaining walls and such. This, this is a good balance for the site, which is why we put it here.
Okay. We're going to get to some public testimony in just a few minutes, if you, just hang on, sorry. I know, but I, we got to follow the proper procedure to have the public testimony on the record as part of the public hearing. Just give me a couple of minutes, we will get to it. Katie, is there more of your presentation that you haven't offered yet?
No, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Other questions by members of the board?
Well, I have a bunch of questions, but I don't...
We first got to accept this for review.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept this matter for review.
One second.
It's a motion to find the application complete and accept it for review. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5002, accept it for review. The applicant has discussed waivers of the sidewalk because of the geography, and we've got to consider this waiver of the lighting plan as well. Are there other waivers that the applicant requires, Donna? Or Katie? No? So those are the two. Before we vote on waivers, I think we'd get the public's opinion on those, because they're going to care about that. Is there any other issues you always want to hear from the applicant first, before we hear public testimony?
I wanted to talk a little bit about the parking lot, the big parking lot, and does it need to be paved, is my question. I notice it's, you know, it's completely impervious, and does it need to be for your purposes?
I guess that would be a question for Mike, I don't know what, what the client would prefer.
It, 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 it really does have to be paved. I mean, we, we were, we were considering pervious pavement there, that was one of the first designs that came through, and there was, there was significant concern about, you know, maintaining it, and so on and so forth, and ripping it up. This is principally storage for brand-new cars, and the worry, the worry is, is in the snow plowing, right, or just plain moving them around, that they get road, you know, rock chips or something like that, if it were a gravel lot.
Bob Baskerville, Bedford Design. We did discuss pervious pavement early on, but I think this is either a 20-year or a 30-year lease. They wanted to do a very long-term lease, and they were afraid of it holding up, and then you've also got alteration of terrain issues with the water running down and catching gravel or whatever else comes off that, especially if, and in the winter, they're going to go in there and move them all to one side, plow one side, and then move them all to the other side. So you'd be out there trying to plow on something that's impervious, so they felt that it had to be traditional pavement was the best way to go.
Okay, I just wondered, then the next question leads to the, the drainage design. I know that you've got an infiltration underneath of this lot, right?
We have that, three, three separate areas.
Yeah, and you've got ledge there, because you're going to be, so do you have the percolation necessary to take care of that infiltration?
Yes, we do.
You've done tests?
We have taken test pits. I didn't do them myself, and I know the alteration of terrain is still being worked on, but it's mostly almost finished. So up here, I believe it works, down here it works. Here is where there, there's more ledge than there is in the other places, so there may be some blasting that's needed.
Okay, but you've got the permeability in order to prevent exceeding...
Yes, we've got A and B soils, which are the more permeable soils.
Yeah, and the capacity to take care of this much impervious surface, that's all.
You want to talk?
Just a mix, as I talked to Jeff a lot in the test pits. We were surprised where a mix of materials this was. We hit ledge in spots, but not predominant over the whole thing. You've got nice, good beach sands down here in this corner, where we put the one main system. But then up here, you also had glacial tills. It seemed like every pit you dug was kind of a gas, it was so different from each other one. So it wasn't uniform, and up here was all well-drained soils for the soil tables. So where there is soil, it's really good with really good perk rates, and we did a lot of perk tests, a lot of test pits. It was just a very varied site, surprisingly so.
Okay. The before and after runoff from the site, then, is less after than before?
Yes.
Runoff and volume.
And all of that's part of what CLD's...
Yep, runoff and volume.
Wouldn't that be part of what CLD's going to be looking at as well?
Yes, it would be, yeah, but they hadn't looked at it yet. Okay, the, the other thing, you showed us the picture of, so that was one of my questions, the easements you're taking care of. I wanted to ask about sewer. You mentioned your hookup to the sewer. Have you been to the wastewater treatment plant with regard to that?
Yeah, we have talked to them. Potty, want to talk to this one?
See, I actually just came to wear my lucky tie, but I wasn't going to say anything. I talked to Ken...
We're not going to let you out of here.
I talked to Ken Conady, and we originally showed the connection, it's got an existing connection here, going up, and we were going to tap in and go to that. He called me up and scolded me and said, "You can't do that." So we're going to use the existing sewer connection for this. Right now, it appears that the owner will not tear down the house, he'll probably use it for something. And just to bring it up, there is no ability to add another connection.
That's what I thought.
So even though there's room here, there's nowhere in the near current future, there's no budget, it's not currently budgeted planned to take this and send it to this Merrimack sewage treatment plant.
Well, that doesn't go to the Merrimack's treatment plant, that's ghost in Ashland.
What the sewage department would like to do eventually...
Oh, okay.
Is to switch the flow and take this whole part of town and send it to your plant, not to Nashland. That's the long-term plan. But it's so long-term, you guys don't even know about it yet.
That's good. It's a long pipe.
Yes, it's a, it's a long pipe, and it's, it's not in any current budget.
Yeah.
So this whole area just really can't be used, because you can't.
I wanted to be sure you were aware of that.
We were.
And you have done that homework, okay.
So we're going to connect here. If they decide to keep the house and use it for a residence or an office, we'll probably have to put in a small septic system next to it.
Yeah.
So the one connection we have will be used for the carbonated one. They were going to save this, because they can't do anything here now anyway. So this will all stay permeable for now, and we know that it's long-term. There's nothing going to be here. So all of the permits we're submitting to the DOT are only for this and for this. And we sat down with them, and they said, "All this is just very low-traffic generating." You know, it's a, by the way, different bureaus. This is part of the Turnpike Bureau, not District 5. So we've been, it's, this is actually part of the...
No, no, it's DOT.
No, it's a different bureau.
It's the Turnpike Bureau, you're correct.
Right. And we've talked to them, and they said it's a low-traffic generator.
Okay, as far as that was, as far as your curb cuts, I'm sorry, you were talking two different issues there. Okay, I'm satisfied, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Any other comments? I'll stand.
I was just wondering, it's a little early, but do you have a timeline on this?
They've been calling me up every other day going, "Is it in yet?"
Yeah, no, the question is, it's...
Based on the pressure I've been receiving, they, they're very enthusiastic to start this immediately. We'll have to get the other permits, but they...
Yeah, but they have to go to consultants, and it says here you stop November 15th.
Yes.
So, yeah, I don't even know if you get to start by November 15th. So I was just wondering if you had a, a timeline. It doesn't really look like you'll be doing much.
I don't think we'll have our alteration of terrain permit in time to be in before November 15th.
Okay, thank you.
But they want to finalize the deal with a car rental, and then they'll have to go in for their building signed for the variance, so I don't think they're going to be starting in the next 60 days.
That's what I...
Regardless of how many times they call me.
So for the car rental, are they, are they renting out the Volkswagens? Are they going to have the, that, they'll have, in the parking lot immediately around there, that's going to be where they store the, the rental cars, they'll be there? Okay. Thanks.
Again, that, that piece is not, is not out of, you know, it's just like, they do the same thing at the Honda dealership where they...
Mike, got a microphone?
I'm sorry. They do the same thing at the Honda dealership here, where Enterprise operates an office out of their, right out of their service department, and they have a couple of cars available to their customers. So this, this is completely a subcontracted...
So does the Enterprise rental car business mainly support customers of the Auto Fair, or if I want to rent an Enterprise car, can I just show up there and get one?
It is an Enterprise outlet, so, you know, if anybody could come here and rent a car.
Hi, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was going to wait till later, but I'm getting kind of confused here, because I'm very disappointed from, from start A, when Volkswagen police come, and I think it's a mess now with overloaded cars and on roadways, every place. And then we're talking, and there's two, it looks like a double-wide trailer, an office there, and I don't know if that's for used cars or who it's for. And then now you're talking about storage and a car rental dealership. So I'm getting a little confused.
I apologize. The temporary trailer that, or sales offices that you see there is because we've had to take them out of the building to renovate it. That will go away just as quick as we possibly can and get them back in the building up above. It is a cluster mess there right now, that, that, you know, between the Auto Fair needing to run a business, me needing to run a construction company, and have another 50 people come to work, it's, it is, it's, it is bad, and I hope that you have patience with us.
All I'm hoping is that when you finish, it'll look nice. All I'm hoping is that when you finish, it'll look nice, and everything will look nice, not like it does now.
Yes, and quite honestly, you know, this is a, this is going to make a huge difference to us, in terms of being able to control the whole environment there.
Thank you.
Including loading and unloading cars.
Bob Baskerville again. One little correction from before, just might clarify it a bit. While some of the owners are the same, this is one LLC, this is another LLC, and I've been told the ownership is not the same. There are some differences. There's some primary partners that are the same, but it's two separate LLCs, and that's one reason you need easements, is it's two different owners, anybody could sell one. So this took place, then they had to coordinate this. I've been on the planning board in Stratton for a long time, and we've got about eight dealers in a row on Route 33. We've had several come and do the same thing with the back lots, with the fences, is that especially in this last 10 years, what they've been through, the manufacturers much more say, "I'm going to ship you so many cars on this date, and you're going to take them this year, or you won't get your allowance next year." You can't sit and tell the factory, "Don't send me anymore right now." They say, "We're going to ship them, and you're going to take them, or you won't get them next year." So they're all doing these back lots. And the one out in Stratton, there's one out, if you go up Route 33, there's some Dunkin' Donuts there, you'll see a lot behind the Dunkin' Donuts. It's not even next to the Subaru dealer. It's three and a half blocks away.
Well, it's just, I know you're tight on space, and you're using that area that hasn't been approved or anything, it's loaded with cars right now. I don't even know how you're going to construct your buildings, because where do you put all the cars? You're using the space, but, well, that's, I guess, your problem. But I'm concerned because when you were here with the Volkswagen, I was concerned about overloading the lots. And now you're overloading the Volkswagen lot, you're overloading the storage area that you have permission to use. So I just don't know. I'm hoping everything will come out at the end.
I think it will, but before you go...
Again, this is probably the worst you're ever going to see it. It really is bad, and we agree. If we could have it any other way and still allow me to build the building, in fact, this is, I almost wish, I almost wish they weren't there. But it is temporary, I promise you.
Thanks, Mike. My comment was going to be that the Auto Fair Volkswagen is not the subject parcel that's before us today.
It's, I guess what I'm concerned about is credibility. What they said, like Volkswagen was here, and now I'm saying, should I believe them, what they're going to say now? I do believe you. I think you will get it squared away. But it isn't the Volkswagen, it's credibility.
I got you.
Well, you know, one of the most important things to Andy Cruz is his word. Just so that you do know, you know, the manufacturer did try to ship us some cars, and he stopped it. Because it's so bad there, I get, well, I'm under an awful lot of pressure to get it done just as quickly as possible. And unfortunately, cutting the corner of that building off, which is going to make a big difference, is an exceedingly difficult thing to do, and to not have them is a heartbeat. We, I've never been in a position where if Andy says something, it does come to pass. This is trying to also keep that word. Having this extra space is really going to make all the difference in the world to how that front site looks and operates.
I think I'd offer one more comment, and it goes along with what Stan's saying, that I think that I do find you to be credible in the things that you say. And the reason that I do is that I've driven by there on occasion and saw some vehicle that caught my eye and tried to pull and take a look at it. And after trying to take a look at it, I left. Because you can't get in there, you can't get out, you can't turn around, you pull in the lot, you got to back out, no place to stop. So I know you're not going to leave it like this, because you won't sell any cars like this. I know that you're going to get it right in the end. I know that that's what you guys want to do for the name-brand of Volkswagen, as well as for whatever else goes on the site. I do want to comment and talk a little bit. Can you bring me the picture of the Enterprise building again? The elevation of it? The colored one? Oh, boy.
Oh, God.
Wow. How much of this is, I know that when we were here with Volkswagen, a lot of the design of their building was that the building has sort of become the brand, or it's the trade dress or whatever. And I would imagine that the green color, the green sign is part of Enterprise's trade dress. But how much of the rest of this building is something that they're married to in terms of their design?
I haven't spoken directly to the Enterprise. I'm talking to the architect, who's Steve Burnall up in Manchester. If you have comments, I can bring the comments back to the architect and let him know your opinions.
Sidewalk around it, landscaping around it, a peaked roof, perhaps some lighting, that sort of thing?
Less green doors.
Yeah.
Yep, there's a sidewalk around it, landscaping out front. There's a landscape island here, landscaping in the front and along here with some ornamental trees. It's hard to see, it's really tiny right here, but...
Better than the picture with the building sitting in the middle of basically asphalt. I don't even know, I don't want to overreach what the planning board's supposed to do with architectural design, but the green awnings don't help.
Okay, write that down.
So this looks like there's just awnings over where it says Enterprise and not everywhere else.
Yeah, and this one, yeah, that was a previous iteration. I just brought it so you could kind of see colors, an idea would be gray with blocks and such.
No, I'm sure you've got the right colors, because those are Enterprise's house colors. I mean, where are you going to put your AC pack for that building? Is it going to be hidden? I mean, I think you've got to come back with a much more friendly look. I mean, I understand the color scheme, which I suspect we can't do much about. But we've certainly lent on other well-known national brands, and I'm thinking of Burger King down the other end of Continental Boulevard. We would not buy their standard, "This is what you're going to get" approach, and I don't like that at all. I think you've got to put something much more into the sort of pitch roof, the things that we've tried to do in this town. I think that that building just, and frankly, I think it will be an eyesore against what I know in the nice building that Volkswagen are putting up. I really think you've got to do something to soften that compared to what's, you know, what's going up alongside next door.
Okay.
I really do. And the other question I've also got, when you come to unload your vehicles being delivered from the factory in large numbers, which they insist you take, at present, you unload on Continental Boulevard. Your transporters park, I agree to some extent, there's a bit of a hard shoulder, but your transporters park, and the driver then unloads them. And then they do it all hours of the day. They frankly, I don't like the way they do it. I think you've got to give us some idea of, if you're going to be unloading those, and you do it at 4:00 in the afternoon when Fidelity are tipping out, you create chaos at that point. That little bit of Continental Boulevard is not funny at that time of day. I think you've got to come up with either a plan for when you do unload transporters, and I'm not saying we want it done at night, I'm thinking you've got to do it in non-peak periods. But at present, those transporters can be there at 6:00 in the morning when I go to work. They can be there at 4:00 in the afternoon when Fidelity are tipping out. Those are a nuisance. I appreciate you probably can't pull a transporter onto the site. Certainly you couldn't at the minute. But I want to know how you're going to unload your cars in the long term. I don't like them on Continental Boulevard.
Yep, we did design it that they will be able to go up this way. They can go straight up to the back, they go this way and back up, straight to this. This opens up, and the cars will get put in here.
Oh, that's wonderful. I wish you'd told me that at the start.
Sorry, I forgot to mention that.
Thank you.
That's why these radiuses are so large, then they can leave.
Thank you so much.
And go back out.
So pleased to hear that.
Thank you, guys. Are there other comments or questions?
No.
Let's let the public and the abutters have a moment, say what they want to say about the project. And thank you for your patience, sir. I know that you want to come up, and I didn't let you earlier, but please, now is your chance. Yes, please. You can have the table, you can have the handheld, whatever you like. Please sign in on the clipboard. There you go. Take a minute to do that.
Affiliation, just homeowner?
Whatever you like, yeah, abutter, or homeowner, interested citizen, whatever you want to put. Feel free to have a seat, you don't have to stand. And thank you again for your patience.
One question that comes to mind here.
Hang on one second. Introduce yourself, please.
That parking lot up there.
Hang on, one more time.
Your name for the record. Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go.
I'm a little hard here, so...
That's all right.
Understood.
So am I.
My name's Ken Morse, and I live at 229 Atticook Road.
Thank you, Ken. So tell me what you've got going on.
Next to the field there. Okay. The parking lot up there, it's going to be on a hill, right?
Yeah, about eight feet.
They're going to flatten out the hill.
About eight feet above the elevation of the two houses that are nearby.
The what?
About eight feet higher in elevation than the two houses that are nearby.
I think it's more than eight feet.
I think their engineering designs were just, it's just what we took a look at was eight. Oh, okay.
Does go up quite a little ways. Yeah, on the house right next to the field. They're going to have to probably dynamite some of that ledge in there. Because where my house is, I'm sitting on a ledge.
Yeah, I think they already, I don't know what exact spots, but they're already talking about blasting.
If they dynamite, are they going to ruin my house? You know what I'm saying, with the vibrations?
You don't have to, please finish all your comments, then we'll get you to respond.
All right, all right. Number two question is, if they do put a parking lot up there, they're going to asphalt it, right?
Yes.
With our car. Now, in the wintertime, they're going to have to plow it, and they're going to have to salt it. Is all that salt and stuff coming down to me? Okay?
They have to plow it, I don't think that they're going to be salting it.
Where are we here, anyone? That's my house here, I think, right? All right, right down here, why it's not, the trees have not been taken out, is because there is a swamp in there, okay? Every spring, a swamp.
Swamp, okay, got you.
Every spring, the water comes down here and goes right down in here, right into the sewer system, his house. Is that going to affect the environment of the trees and the stuff like that?
Okay, we'll have them address that in a minute.
And what was I going to say? This piece in here is not going to be used at all, right?
That's what they've represented to us today.
All right. Why can't they move? I mean, we're going to be able to see the lights. I don't care what anyone says, we're going to be able to see the lights. And we're probably going to hear the noise and everything else. Okay? Why do they have to put their parking lot here? Why can't they put it further, either further back or further over here? That's number...
I'll have them address that when they have a chance. Is there anything else that you'd like us to consider?
Pardon?
Is there, I'm just taking my notes of the things that you say, so I can have them address it later. Is there any?
What was I going to say? We have a lot of people that come up our driveway now. They cut across, and I guess they got their cars being repaired or something like that over here. We're going to have more of that?
So people, customers of Auto Fair are currently using your driveway?
They come up my driveway, and they cut right across right to Auto Fair. I'm going to have to put a sign out there that says private property, but is this going to cause more traffic from the, from people?
Yeah, I don't even see the connection there, what we're talking about.
It doesn't show on the plan, but they can't do that. How do they get across?
They walk.
Oh, walking.
They don't drive, no, they don't drive. There's trees and stuff in there.
Ken, thank you for clarifying, and I appreciate Madam in the back, I think, thank you for the answer.
That's my wife.
Yeah, we guessed that.
Do have to funnel you through a microphone with somebody that's signed in.
Come on up.
We have a, my name's Pat Morse, by the way.
My wife.
We have a problem with a lot of people that it's a dead-end road. They don't want to walk out on Continental Boulevards. They come down Atticook Road, and they cut across our driveway and cut across that empty thing towards the house. They shoot across to the drive... So we're constantly seeing people coming up our driveway and going up. We don't know if they're coming up towards our place or whatever, but we see people coming around that have no business to be there whatsoever. And if you've got more stuff like, you know, Enterprise or whatever going in there, what's going to stop them from saying, "I want to go rent the car, I'm just going to walk through there, because it saves me from going all the way around"?
Okay, I got you. We'll ask them to address that.
And then the fact that they're walking up there, they're coming into our backyard, which means there could be, you know, possibility of burglary or some safety issues that could come our way from people coming in saying, "Oh, look at the backyard here, we can do this, we can do that."
I almost hit people coming down my driveway that were coming up the driveway.
Okay, I got you.
There's like bushes there, and you can't see, and you almost hit them sometimes.
Okay.
We've had to tell people to get off the property, and they look at us like, "Why are you telling us to get off the property?"
Understood, I got you. Anything else?
You know, any other concern I have, alarm systems. You see, you're going to have surveillance systems and lights and stuff like that. What happens when a car alarm goes off? How long is it going to take to respond before it gets shut down? The reason I say that is because we have an innovation across the street, and in the middle of the night, a balloon flows away inside their building, and it sets off the alarms. And nobody shuts them off, a half hour, 45 minutes.
Building alarm or car alarm? Because car alarms won't run for more than a minute.
No, 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 I'm just saying that we're having a building alarm from across the street that goes off at 45 minutes. I don't know how long a car alarm will go off, but if it goes off in the middle of the night, and it keeps waking us up, it's interrupting our sleep. So whether it rings for five minutes or 10 minutes, or, you know, what's going to stop it from going on and off like that?
Okay, I got you. Anything else that you want to add? Let me take while you're here, because you've supplied this written testimony as well that I've promised to read into the record. And so while you're here, and since it's your testimony, I'll go ahead and read it now. It's from Kenneth Morse and Patricia Morse, 99, 2014, regarding proposed use of the Volkswagen Auto Fair property. And it has seven bullets. The first bullet is, "How was the property changed from residential to commercial without our notification?" Second bullet is, "After 70 years on this wooded property, why are you allowing the destruction of wildlife habitat and green space for car storage facility?" The third bullet is, "Why so close to our residence? That will have personnel consistently near our backyards depriving us of our privacy and safety from burglars and car break-ins." The fourth bullet is, "Car alarms being triggered all the time. Spa across the street only works during the day, but their alarms go off during the night and does not get shut off for at least a half an hour. This interrupts our sleep." The fifth bullet, "This is a seven-day-a-week business. Concerns about noise, lights, loudspeakers, and alarms going off at all hours of the night and day." The sixth bullet, "Strangers will be taking shortcuts through our property, and our safety is now in question." And the last bullet is, "Why is there a need for such an overflow parking area?" And that is submitted to Ken and Pat Morse, 229 Atticook Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire. So I just wanted to read that into the record because you supplied it. If you have anything else that you'd like to add, glad to hear it. We will have the folks from the applicant address the concerns that you've raised.
Chairman?
Yes, please.
I have a question. How often does somebody walk through your property? You say people walk. That's one a week?
Three, four times a week, anyway.
We, I see them often.
We catch, we don't know.
We're not always there, and, but when we are there, we do see, you know, all of a sudden I'll see somebody walking up the hill, and it's like, I think it's a delivery guy, and I realize it's just somebody taking a shortcut.
Are they taking a shortcut to get to AutoFair, or to get to whatever's on the other side of it, or?
We're not sure where they're going to, but, you know, there's a lot of shortcuts, and having a viable business right next door to us would probably create more walkthroughs than necessary.
Okay.
My question that I didn't understand was the second part of it, is where they're going. Because I'm looking at a big piece of property here, and it's woods, proposed buildings, and buildings that are there now. There's nothing to go to.
Actually, there's.
But then a person would drive.
If they had a car, if they left their car at the dealer and they're walking home.
It certainly, they certainly could be. We'll talk to the Volkswagen folks about it here, and say, is there anything else that you want to bring up?
But there are also, there are kids that jump up there, and they go across, they can get to Penetech Square, and they want to stay off the highway, or they get across to go to McDonald's. Don't know exactly where they're going, all I know is that we, every once in a while, we do catch them, and we try to stop them from doing it, because we don't want to be liable for anybody injured on our property. But it's just, I just don't want an increase of that kind of possibility happening.
It's, it's an important note, not just for this application, but several of us are part of the sidewalk and pedestrian master plan committee, and people walking in a place where there isn't a sidewalk for them to go because there's a need to get there, is an important thing for this committee to know about, where those locations are.
Well, there is no sidewalks on Continental Boulevard.
We are a dead-end street.
Yeah, that's why they're going in your neighborhood, because there's no sidewalk.
And they, they come right up to our, to the dead end, and then they just jump up across, there's a fence that's there, so they can't walk to the end and go in, you know, and just continue on, so they have to come up our driveway to get around the fence.
I see. I got you.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions? Thank you for your testimony, we'll have them address those comments and questions here in a second. Is there anybody else, any other abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? Hang on a second, you gotta sit down, sign in. Then introduce yourself. Okay, great.
I prefer not to sit, if you don't mind, and I really don't think I need the mic.
You do need the mic for the folks at home, they can't hear you without it.
Okay. My name's Francis Whaley, I'm a direct abutter. I think the, a lot of the issues have been addressed with what Pat and Kenny had to say. Obviously, this is somewhat devastating for us, who have lived in this neighborhood for myself twenty-five years, Kenny seventy years, and his folks before him. It's always been highly wooded. Since I have lived here for the last twenty-five years, we've already had one business come into the neighborhood, into a residential zone, get rezoned. It actually worked out probably the best that it could. The first time that somebody came in there, they tried to put it in an industrial shoe shop, and you folks denied it, thank you very much. You put in Innovations, and they did a very nice job of a beautiful building, low-profile lighting, they did the best they could with what they had. I understand that people have a right.
I don't mean to interrupt you.
I have, I have.
There you go.
People have a right to do what they want with their land. It's a fine line where we live between commercial and residential. Somewhere that line is going to take a toll on somebody sooner or later. But it's, it's quite devastating here, because we are very much in the woods. My backyard is black at night. I am extremely affected by this, because even though there may be a hundred and eighty feet from my house to this corner, my two acres are completely open, right here. From my back porch to this corner, it's completely open. The buffer right here, this forty-foot buffer, a few pine trees, a hundred feet tall, big around. It's not too hard to see around them. You flash a light, and it's coming right towards my property. Lighting is gonna be an issue here. I don't know if this parking lot can be shortened. The shorter, the better for us. Obviously, something's gonna happen here whether we like it or not, and I believe that these folks and yourselves would do a fine job of doing the best that you can for us. I truly believe that. The shorter, the better. Any type of trees that can be planted, like abrevites or the fence, obviously having slats, this is all a good thing. Lighting is gonna be a big issue here. There's no way we're not gonna see it. The shorter, the better for me. My garden is right here, right off of this corner. And my back porch is right here. There's no way I'm not gonna see this NFL football, ball-sized parking lot. Just not gonna, not be able to see it. I would urge that you please do the best that you can to provide us with the most amount of protection that you can against seeing all this. I don't know much about LED lighting. I don't know what you can do. It's a, it's a tough issue. I want to see you folks do what you want with your own land and have what you have. I don't want my neighbor who's lived here his whole life, when it was all farm, when that whole area was all farm, to have to be frustrated by something that he shouldn't have to have lived his whole life here, to end up with a parking lot in his backyard that he has to, has to see and put up with. This is a tough situation for everybody. I please, I urge you all to please do the best that you can to protect us the most that you can. That's really all I have to say.
Before you go, Francis, is this your letter?
It is.
Okay, while you're here, then I'll read that into the record as well, but first, does any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Whaley? No?
No, I would just point out to Mr. Whaley that there's quite a bit of landscaping. If you look at the landscaping plan, it looks like quite a bit of screening, planting has been provided here, but we can let the applicant talk more about that later, but just wanted to call it to his attention that there is quite a bit on there now.
Yeah, there is, and there's actually a table that lists the species of trees to be planted, and describes their mature height and all of that, so you know that you've got some tall, some medium, some short, that we'll get a chance to take a look at.
It's what they have to put in.
Yeah, it won't be there today, obviously, there's the things that they're gonna put in. So, I've got this correspondence that you prepared. It's dated Tuesday, September ninth, 2014, to the town of Merrimack Community Development. My name is Francis Whaley, I live at 227 Natta Cook Road in Merrimack, New Hampshire, and I'm a direct abutter to the new plan issued by AutoFair Storage and Rental at 302 Continental Boulevard. First, I would like to state my total opposition to allowing any large parking lot so close to my residence below are some of my concerns. One, residential value and resale. This has always been a residential property, commercial use. This close to this property would hamper potential buyers in value. Two, noise. The storage area is approximately three hundred and twenty feet, and a hun, by a hundred and twenty-five feet, that's a lot of car storage coming and going seven days a week, and all hours of the night and day. Three, lights. Backyard has always been dark. Four, privacy. All kinds of people will now be able to watch my family in the pool, not just a neighbor from a residential neighborhood. Five, I don't know what the first word is. Crime, I think. Crime, potential for thieves breaking into vehicles. Thank you for considering my concerns. If this plan is accepted, I hope you will consider some type of visual buffer, as well as restrictions on light use and hours of operation. Sincerely yours, Francis Whaley. Is there anything else that you'd like to add?
I think that pretty much covers it.
Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. If there's no other questions from the board, are there any other citizens or abutters who wish to weigh in? I see a hand up. Come on forward. Please take a minute to sign in. Then introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
Yes. My name is Tom Ballencourt, I live at 35 Greenleaf Street, Merrimack.
Tom, can you identify, is Greenleaf in the area of this picture? Could I see it on any of the plans?
Yes, you, yes, you can. In fact, there it is right there.
I got you.
Okay.
Thanks.
This is, this is my home, and so it was built just a couple of years ago, it's one of the new homes. We've, we really enjoy it because we're surrounded by woods. We don't really have too much of an impact from, from the businesses. We, the Harley-Davidson motorcycle business was quite loud. A lot of the sound, I think, travels up the hill, and we're kinda happy that, you know, AutoFair kind of bought the place, because it's, it's been much quieter. But we are concerned, you know, when more and more businesses are encroaching in a residential area. I'm very happy to hear that the, the board is addressing concerns like lighting. That's, that's very important, I really appreciate the, you know, the innovative uses of shades and, and different ways to direct the light. That's, that's very important, because, you know, if this operation is, is running twenty-four-seven, it, you know, it affects people's sleep patterns, it affects a lot of different things. A couple of concerns that I don't think were addressed was, was noise. I didn't hear anything about where the limits are. I know the light is controlled at the boundaries, but what about noise? I know the noise carries up the hill, and if this operation is running twenty-four-seven, which, which we hear trucks all the time at Home Depot unloading, usually, you know, about four AM, they start coming in and they're unloading, and we can hear them quite clearly. You almost hear, you know, conversations. Yeah, it's, because it's quiet, and all that sound carries. So I, I'd like to hear, you know, how that's gonna be addressed for this operation. And my other concern was, this was brought to my, my attention by my neighbors, I didn't, I wasn't an abutter, so I had no idea this was even happening. I'm not sure, you know, technically speaking, I'm not an abutter, so I didn't expect to be notified, but it is pretty much in my backyard. And, you know, it is, there is a lot of wetlands around there, so I am concerned that there's a lot of pavement going in. There's, there's the Natta Cook, you can, you can see it on the map here, there's obviously a lot of wetlands all around this area here, so putting a lot of pavement in here, I know there's catch basins, and we do a good job of pumping it off somewhere else, but there's always runoff with major storms, and the water goes into the wetlands. There's foxes and bear and all sorts of animals that are in this area. There's, there's actually a highway of animals that are moving through here constantly. If any of you have driven through this area, you'll encounter a deer or a bear on, on the road. So this will be affecting some of the wildlife as well. That's probably a matter for the conservation committee to, to take up. That's really all I had to say. Thank you.
Hang on one second. Any questions? Stand.
No, I have nothing here.
I, I must have missed something. This business is gonna be open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week?
Well, that's, that's a good question. You know, what are, what are the business hours? I know that, you know, car dealerships are typically open seven days a week. And if they're gonna be unloading and loading at different hours. It's not like a hair salon where you can expect, you know, a nine-to-five operation. I would expect, you know, a residential area to have businesses that are low-key.
I believe when they deal, we dealt with AutoFair Volkswagen, it's probably like seven in the morning until nine at night, the latest. I don't know about deliveries in the nighttime or anything else, but I didn't know if you knew something more than I did about twenty-four-seven.
No, no, I, I know that I can rent a car pretty much any time of the day, so I figure the, you know, the rental operation would be in, in operation.
Yeah, but you said any time during the day, not during the night.
Well, that's one of my questions.
Okay.
You know, if you could enlighten me, that would be appreciated.
No, that's, that's good. You should know.
But if it does help, Stan, I do know what the gentleman's referring to, because I'm not much further, I live not much further away from Home Depot than you do. And he is right, when Home Depot delivery is coming in at three and four o'clock in the morning, you can hear the beep, 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 backup noises, it's very noticeable. Unfortunately, that's federal law, you have to have the damn noise thing there, and, I mean, but I know what he's saying, he's right. You can hear it, because, but I don't think this is gonna be relevant in this particular site.
I, I think that, as far as the noise goes, I would say doors slamming, car doors slamming, people getting in and out, and a lot of other noise that you might get in other areas. And I can't speak at all to, Alistair does a good job about when trucks come in for delivery and stuff, but.
You can hear it at Home Depot.
My hearing isn't nearly as good as yours. Nelson?
Bob, my recollection is that we had put some limits on Home Depot on hours of delivery, and I don't remember what they are, and I would ask the staff to check that out.
I think that's a, a good thing to take a look into, separate from this, because I, I remember there was hours of operation, and there was concerns from abutters and all of that with them, so.
That all came up at the time of the Home Depot approvals, and I think we put some limits on it, but, and that they agreed to.
I'll double-check the actual hours, but I think you're right of, I don't know if it starts at seven AM or nine AM, but I'll have to double-check that.
Yeah. It's typically been our practice to.
Sorry, sorry.
Here, you can have a pen that doesn't click anymore. With dumpsters and the commercial developments, we usually tell folks that they got a, you know, no dumpster banging in the middle of the night, and it would seem to be the same kind of thing with Home Depot, that it'd be the kind of thing that would likely have been there.
It's, it's usually the trucks, the trucks have a low rumble, and that's usually that, that's the sound that you hear.
Yeah. Well, separate from this applicant, if, we'll have the staff take a look at what Home Depot's approved for, and if they're getting deliveries in the hours when they're not supposed to.
Thank you.
We'll call it to their attention, see if we can't get that straightened out for you.
Great, thank you.
And with that, are there, gotten everybody in the room, I think, so, anybody?
If you'd like just to draw them in one more time real quick?
If you come forward to a microphone.
On, again, on the lighting issue, and, you know, you brought up hours of operation. When Innovations went in with the lighting, Mrs. Granger, who owns, also an abutter, who's not here, she's ninety-two and couldn't make it tonight, was very concerned about the lights. And you guys put some restrictions on the lights at night, and they, they put them on a timer so that they go out at a certain time at night. I know that security is an issue with all these cars, but if it's at all possible, just bear that in mind, if it is at all possible to do some type of timers at night, it's just a thought, I just want to throw it out there. That is obviously the point where lights are gonna bother us the most. You know, even if it was lights out at ten o'clock, just a thought, something for you to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whaley. Are there any other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing none, let me close the public clearing, ask the applicant to come back before us, and we'll pose a few questions to you based on what the neighbors have asked about. Thank you, Bob. Coming forward.
I'm gonna start, there's a lot of issues, I'll go through a bunch.
Okay.
Then I might have Mike and Katie help me a little bit later. First issue, the people walking across the lot by Natta Cook Road, that's one I wouldn't have guessed. So I'd be glad to talk to the owner, would be glad to post it, no trespass or whatever. If they wish, we can extend that fence, and then once people find out you can't make that throughway anymore, we'd be glad to look into that, I'm just saying. That's something, I wouldn't have expected that much traffic going up there.
I wouldn't have expected it either, I appreciate your willingness to look into it. If you would, when you look into it, if the applicant prefers landscape buffer or some kind of, I don't know, if you put a boulder there, or something that blocks the path other than, if they, I don't know, maybe they. If you would, when you look into it, if the applicant prefers landscape buffer or some kinda, I don't know, if you put a boulder there or something that blocks the path other than, if they're, I don't know, maybe they love the fence? Maybe they want some other solution.
Something to make it difficult or whatever they like, we'll look at that for you.
Yeah. Yeah, constrain that, and if you can figure out where they're going.
You can do these meetings for thirty years and still have people surprise you and go, well, they do this. Really? Didn't get that one. Just explaining the landscape waiver for these people, because they may not have understood.
It's not a, it's not a waiver, landscape buffer.
Sorry, the lighting waiver.
Lighting.
It's late, sorry. Only had six or seven coffee today. For the lighting waiver, we asked for, the town has requirements for how much light you should have in the parking lot. Mike designed it in a lot of the parking lot to have less than the minimum. So we're already trying to do lights that are as low as we can, so it won't be as bright as the lights out front. Just explaining the waiver we asked for. And we'll take a look at those. I know there are ways to dim some of them. Ours are already gonna be so dim. We'll have to see whether you can do that with the, um, security cameras and still have them effective.
Okay. And I think the board would be inclined, as part of our other discussion, to add into conditions of approval that the lighting be optimized to not be visible from the neighbors using shields or LED lighting or whatever the appropriate effect is, and that CLDs can take a look at that for us.
Well, with the, the, I, I wish I could promise you that there would be no impact to, uh, and, and I...
Make sure your microphone's on.
I mean, I, I would, I would love to be able to promise that there would be no impact. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure to what extent there, there is gonna be an impact. I will promise to minimize that to the greatest extent possible. If, if I can reduce the power of those lights, I will reduce them down to the bare minimum necessary for us to be able to, uh, operate the security cameras on it.
But Mike, we're not talking about reducing the power, because we don't want you to lose your security. But the fact is, if you go up to the outlet mall, when they first put their lights in, even though there was zero spillover, the, the residents down the bottom were, could see the lights. It's not that there was any light hitting their property, it was just that it was there. And we, they very kindly put in shields so that in fact they can't even, it's not cutting off the light, it's just cutting up, so you can't see the bulb.
That, that promise I can make.
That's what...
That, that I will...
So go up to the outlet mall and drive around the back where the property is down below and see what they've done, and you'll do the same, and you'll achieve it. You'll make them happy.
Uh, but what I'd like to start with is our Donna's notes, and maybe you can help us with this, Donna? Right, because I wanna, I also wanna make sure that we are in compliance and that we're not overstepping our, our ability here. Uh, 'cause the, one of the, there are two notes here that, that may be germane to this. And it has to do with the wetland setback and the fact that the, the corner here, uh, is next to a wetland. So what, what did you read that may make us, uh...
Which comment are you looking at?
It's, uh, eleven B I.
Eleven B F one.
Right.
Because we have no problem adding more landscaping.
Mike, you gotta stay near your microphone. Um, eleven B five deals with salt use.
One, eleven B one.
My note, eleven B I.
Oh, I. I.
One.
Right, please clarify the notation of the wetland setback.
Right, there's two different ones. We have a twenty-five-foot no distur buffer, and then we have a forty-foot actual wetland building setback. And I didn't review the plans, Tim did, but I'm guessing it was the terminology on the plans, he wants it more specified of showing the actual twenty-five no disturb and the forty-foot wetland building.
Where are we? Where's our corner?
Sheet two of thirteen.
Three of thirteen.
Is it? Well, I've got it on two as well.
Should be in so many places.
Two and three. You've got building setback line and wetland setback line.
Right, so it says wetland setback on the plan, and I believe he would prefer it to say no disturb.
Yeah, the twenty-five foot line should say no disturb and then the forty foot.
But what is, what is the forty foot?
That's in addition to the twenty-five.
That'd be for the building itself.
So that's your actual building.
Parking lots can be within it, not buildings.
Okay. But, but it, but because it's a no disturb buffer, it means that we can't plant in it? We can't do anything in it? In this particular case, is it, is it, uh... Okay.
Are you able to do the landscaping plan that you were talking about with that note?
It's up, it's upside down.
Okay. 'Cause that's, I, that landscaping and buffer that you're talking about building is very important to my view of this, as well as the neighbors', I think.
Mm-hmm.
I did a quick count of the trees, and it looks like there's seventy-four trees under the deciduous and evergreen trees, a combination. And if you look at the plan, it looks like sixty of them are over right in between the houses and the parking lots. And an additional eighty-one deciduous and evergreen shrubs, not including perennials. You know, the shrubs may only be four feet high, but you get seventy-four trees. So we tried to do a mix of four-foot high and eight-foot high.
And the, the deciduous, I mean, the evergreen trees that are shown on the planting plan are only like eight feet wide, shown here, but they get much bigger, that they get like thirty feet wide. So they'll get much bigger when they're more mature.
Still didn't?
Yeah.
We were looking at the, uh, excuse me, but we were looking at the ones up by the parking lot.
Yes.
There.
All right, all right. Well, Donna, uh, how about eleven C?
Right, that's just for all of the landscape buffers to meet the regulations.
All right, I mean, is there any, is there any, uh, I mean, well, quite honestly, I, I haven't been able to review all of this. Are we, are we compliant?
I think the plan would normally indicate that as their determination that a type C or type D buffer was necessary.
You just want me to say which kind of buffer it is? And then, I had, I did do it in a grid. I can turn the grid on, so you can see how many are per twenty feet, I believe it was. You needed a certain type and number, five of these and three of those or whatever.
Yeah, I think...
Is that what, you wanna see like a little grid that shows?
Yeah, if you can indicate it better on the plan, so that we can see the exact buffer.
Yep.
And identify what you believe to be the appropriate buffer, so we can make sure that the plan's on administrator agrees.
I think it's type C, but I will make sure.
Okay, well, because, uh, you know, if ten feet off the end of this makes a big difference, right, ten feet is not gonna put us out of business.
No, I think you've got plenty of room on the upper side, it's the lower side. Now, I'm confused about the wetland buffer that we've been talking about and the no disturb, because the gentleman came testified and said his garden is right there. Who, who delineated the wetland?
Peter Shower, he delineated the wetlands.
Recently or...
Recently, yes. He did, he went back out in the last couple of months.
Can I view it, Peter? I've seen his work.
Peter Shower.
Eighteen...
December twenty-seventh, twenty thirteen, so it was recent, within the last year.
Eighteen, two thousand and fourteen.
Yep.
I have to trust in his work, especially given that he wasn't looking to find any extra wetlands out there.
(laughing)
He did, did the bare minimum, so if he says it's there, it must be there.
Oh, sorry, December the twenty-seventh, two thousand and thirteen, he actually did it.
Well, I guess the other, the other thing I have to do is that I, I believe I can move these poles further away from this, this, uh, that line.
Okay.
And, and as I said, we'll power them down to the minimum required for the security cameras.
Now, part of this effort that we've gotta go through is to get a lighting plan that CLD can get a look at and put some analysis on. So the things that we're talking about that you can do or you're willing to do need to get into paper and pen and over to CLD so they can do something with it.
Right.
Katie, do you understand the wetland setback now?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I think it was just reversed on the plan.
Okay. So... Um, have you, for Mike, the question with the storage lots that Auto Fair made operate otherwise, have any issues with the car alarms being activated at night or by whatever's going on out there?
Not that, not that's ever come to my attention, right, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not a day-to-day manager of the operations either, but it's never come to my attention.
Okay.
You know, I mean, but there are lots, uh, generally are, are further out, like, for example, the, the Manchester, their major storage lot, which has, uh, something a little more than a thousand cars, is at the airport.
Okay. When your, um, off-hours, is there a security guard or anybody on the, on the site?
They, they hire, uh, private security companies that do, uh, patrols throughout the night. Uh, I'm not sure how many times they come back, come by, but when I was moving, when we were moving sales down into the storage trailer, uh, we were there till three o'clock at night, and the, the security people had come by twice.
Okay.
Right, and they, they make regular rounds.
And when they make regular rounds, they're just looking for something that's obviously out of order, like an open gate or...
Right.
Broken doors or something like that?
Right. I, I don't, uh, yeah. I, it, it's never come to my attention about the cars going off. And, and you are right, the, the hours of operation of Auto Fair are seven o'clock in the morning, that's when service opens up, till nine o'clock at night, that's when sales closes. Uh, and, but, but I have been there at six o'clock in the morning, and sure enough, one of the, the car deliveries, which are subcontracted individuals, are sitting there parked, waiting for Auto Fair to come to unload.
Okay. So if they show up before whatever time Auto Fair's open, they just have to sit and wait? There's no...
Well, it's like, it's like any other, uh, deliveries that you get by, by private carriers. You know, they, they, they pick up a load and, and they drive all through the night, and if they happen to show up at five o'clock in the morning, they just sit there and wait until the business opens up.
Okay.
Right, the, the cars aren't actually unloaded, though, until, at least to my knowledge, until there's a representative of Auto Fair there to, to, uh, to take delivery.
Okay, so the noise factor of a, of a truck showing up at two or three or four is a truck that's gonna have to park and sit and wait, and that's the end of the noise?
Yes, well, that, and I, and I don't know how much they can control those private carriers.
Agreed. Desiree.
My thought on that with, with the truck coming in early would be, is it gonna hang around idling? And if it's idling, is it idling at that upper lot where it's gonna be delivering to, waiting for the delivery? Early in the morning or late, late at night, whenever they arrive?
Yeah, I, I, again, as, as, as the private carrier, I'm, if it's winter, I'm sure he would be waiting there idling to keep his, his, uh, heat going. The, the only other deliveries that I do know about, because I have to plan for them inside the building, is, and, and I'm not sure about, believe it or not, not sure about Volkswagen, but I'm sure they're like all the rest, and we've designed the building, uh, that, that they, that parts can receive, uh, delivery, uh, you know, at off-hours. In other words, I have a whole secure vestibule inside the building that they can come and deliver to, and then the, the, when Auto Fair gets there in the morning, the parts are in this room.
Okay, and that can occur whenever the truck driver gets there?
That's correct.
Yeah, you're not talking about an eighteen-wheeler?
No, not, not.
Could be a little van, too.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Desiree.
Couple, couple more comments. You made the comment about if the parking lot, you were saying, you said ten feet shorter and you were doing this dimension?
Well, I, yeah, well...
Were you referring to lighting? Were you referring to the actual? Or were you, 'cause I would be more interested in seeing ten feet shorter, like the overall length of it, shorter than that, to get a little more of a buffer.
The point, the point that I wanted to make is that, uh, you know, we're, we're not see, we, we would like to use our property. We'd like to use it to the greatest extent possible, but I wanna make sure that we're using it within the, the ordinances. And if there's a question about that corner, and it means that the parking lot becomes, you know, uh, eight, ten feet shorter in order to be able to ensure that we have the proper landscape buff, buffer there, that, that's not gonna put, that, that's, that's not gonna be an overly hard hardship for us. I mean, we, we can still park enough cars in there and, and make sure that that corner is thickened up to the right, to the, to the extent that it needs to be.
When you were talking about winter maintenance of it, you were saying that you'd move all the cars over on the one side and plow it, and then move all the cars to the other side, which tells me you've got about a half-full parking lot. Is that the normal use of it?
Yeah, the, uh, normally, normally, the winter sales are a little slower, right? So the, the storage lots, uh, traditionally do not haul out the snow. Uh, and, and it kinda gets all, whoops. It all gets pushed to, to one end, which means that it's, it is getting, uh, you know, the amount is getting reduced and reduced to the, to the extent that they can, uh, uh, well, it really kinda depends on it, whether we have a huge winter like we did a couple of winters ago. I think they did end up hauling a couple of times, but for the most part, they'll push it all to one end and they'll use less and less. In this particular scenario, I would imagine that it would be pushed down to this end, right, and that they, they'd, uh, work from, work from the Auto Fair side back.
Okay. Nelson, did you have a comment or question?
Well, another topic. I'd like to go back to the business about the fence, be clear, with this neighboring property and these cut-through people. This fence you proposed here, is that, can you show us where you would put that?
The, the fence between the, their, the butters' property?
Between yours and the butters' driveway. Their driveway's almost on their property line.
What I was gonna suggest is, between now and the next meeting, I'll go meet with them and ask them if they'd like a fence.
Yeah.
Or would they prefer more vegetation or signs?
Can you point to it on the plan, though, so we know what we're talking about?
Well, this is their house, this is their driveway, so I'm assuming that there's a fence somewhere in here. Oh, right here, there's a fence, it's kind of shaped like this. The Natta Cook Road ends here, and this fence starts...
The fence is there, but it goes all the way down Continental Boulevard.
Right.
The objective is to stop people getting straying onto Continental Boulevard from the dead end of Natta Cook Road.
No, I think the issue was, people were coming up this way, so we wanna put a fence here. So the fence existing now comes here and there, so we would be talking about doing something here.
But the fence is there to stop them coming in, into Continental Boulevard. I mean, that, it, that fence actually goes all the way down here until it links up to where Natta Cook Road, the other bit of Natta Cook Road joins one oh one A. And it, it's, what they're doing is they're going down there, wanting to get to Burger, to McDonald's, they have, they can't get over the fence into Continental Boulevard. They're actually going inside that property line there so they can cross over the road.
Right.
That's what they're doing.
Does that fence block this?
That's, that's something I think we need to address, because they're gonna, you know, they're looking for a way to get through there.
Yeah.
I was going to suggest that we open that and make a pathway.
But it's not, it's not your fence.
It's not our fence. Well, I didn't know about that when I made up this idea.
It's a DOT fence.
Aside from the DOT or whoever's it is, it isn't on these guys' property, so...
Well, that's, that's very unfortunate that they didn't leave that open, and then you could have a walking path and go all the way down to the corner.
I, I suspect that when Natta Cook Road had that cut-off, when it, when Continental Boulevard was built a hundred and fifty years ago.
Wasn't that long ago?
Well, I don't know when it was built, Nelson, but you were probably around. But it does block off the bu, and if you recall, when they did the work in developing this site a little bit more, we had all this issue about people going down Natta Cook Road, the, the, the dead-end bit of Natta Cook Road and trying to get out and do things. It is a problem. I'm, I'm not denying it.
Yeah.
That, that, that area is a problem issue.
Sure, why not? Get a microphone, please.
Uh, you're talking about putting a walkway in there, it's not a good idea.
No, I agree.
Okay? No, we're talking about cutting it off.
Because in the wintertime, that's a dead-end street, I plow there, and they put all that plow up against the, the sign.
Yeah, I know.
The dead-end sign. And, uh, when I plow, I plow out my, uh, mailbox, it goes right up in there, too.
I know, I know what the problem is. I live around the corner.
Oh, do you? Okay.
I live, I know exactly what you're talking about.
That would not be a good idea to put a walkway in there.
No, the, the problem is people trying to get from here to either to McDonald's or to the little strip mall in Penny Shop. or to the little strip mall in Penny Chops Square, and, and it's, and, and to be honest, the other thing that makes it worse is that, is the fact that you can't, if you're coming down Continental this way, people then have to pull a U.E. to try and get back up here. I mean, there are a lot of issues with that little bit of road there.
We're gonna have to fix the duty.
But we can't fix the duty. God bless them.
Can I mention one other thing too? You only got one entrance and exit to that place, really, on Continental Boulevard, you got where the parking lot is, and then you got where, well, it used to be my uncle, his driveway there. If you're gonna put a lot of stuff in there, is that gonna cause traffic problems on Continental Boulevard?
Well, the, the DOT has determined that a car rental and storage would be a low-volume use, and I think that was some of the testimony that they've already provided to us, and I tend to agree with that in terms of experience.
Far great, the far greater problems actually can come from the five, between four and six, when fidelity tip-out, that area becomes a very difficult piece of road there.
Oh, I know, it's all backed up all the way up.
It backs all the way up, beyond Peter Road, all the way up, I know, but this, this isn't gonna make things any, really any worse. But could I get, could you put the picture of the, of the storage area up for me just a second? This, surely if you lose a bit there, and I understand the point you're saying, it's not the be-all and end-all, you could in fact dogleg it down there a little bit, couldn't you?
Oh, the, the drainage is a, is a.
I understand your drainage issues, but I don't believe they're insurmountable.
One more time, doglegged where?
Well, if you, instead of do it, do a little, a little dog bit in there, and then you can pull it slightly further away from the neighbors.
We can have, we can look at that, have Jeff look at it, and.
All we're trying to do is make life easier for everybody.
Yeah, or if it's shorter on that end towards the neighbors and wider towards Home Depot, if there's any room at all, even for a couple of feet.
Yeah.
If that gives you the square footage that you lose by cutting it off.
What I was thinking about, let me borrow your mic for a second, and I'll talk to the owners and Mike later, is if you take ten feet off right here, here's his line of sight here.
Yeah.
Off this corner, if I just take ten feet here, now I build up a three-foot-high berm, so the actual headlights won't see past it, and now I'm putting the shrubs on top of a berm, that helps to both get rid of the lights for the.
That's, that's no heartburn at all.
And I think it doesn't even need, need to go the full length of the edge of the parking lot, just that corner.
Look at it, right.
Just, yeah, nick the corner off of there.
His, his line of sight, here, for that.
That, that gives enough of a, a landscape thickness that we have a little better control.
Right, yeah, and if you do the berm like you're talking about, you cut off the car headlights that could be heading down that way.
And then it makes the shrubs go from three or four feet tall to seven or eight feet tall, and it just helps that line of sight.
And we'll, and we'll put in the, the vinyl slats, that's, that's not a problem, and, and I will look to get the lighting down to its absolute minimum, and I do promise that if, if that does not work, we will install the shields, the blinders.
Are we looking at green slats, is that, you want them green to blend in with what color?
I hadn't had a thought of it, but I would say, you know, green blends in in the summer and brown blends in in the winter.
To match the enter, to match the enterprise awnings.
Oh, yeah. You're talking dark green, not enterprise green.
I, I think, I honestly think that if you have the slats and the fence and the berm and the landscaping and you direct the lighting, you've got pretty good belt suspenders and whatever third thing holds up pants working there, so.
I'm not going there.
That's all I'm choosing, I, I, I think you've done as much as you can, you've done a lot to, to help build, make that situation right, I think that that's good. How do we, as a board, figure out what to do tonight if we've got some things that might change on plans, and I, I don't wanna see you back here another night for eleven o'clock, but I don't know what we need to do in terms of seeing it or having C.L.D. see it, or?
Yeah, we haven't received comments yet from C.L.D., so we don't even know what they are at the moment, and whether there are things that are gonna change this, so.
Why don't we table?
Well, I think some of the things that you've seen are gonna change what C.L.D.'s gonna do.
Yeah.
But I know that you came in the door asking for conditional final approval, I don't know, what do you guys think in terms of what our options are to get there or not get there, or can we not, is it not possible?
Everything I've heard, we can do.
I, I, I believe, I believe that everything that we've spoken about, if the, if the conditions awarded properly are within the capabilities of your staff.
Yes.
To, to, to ensure, or, or to review, and, and if something very striking comes by way of C.L.D., right, then that's probably a whole nother story.
Let's, first of all, Desiree's reminded me, we've got a waiver request that we haven't addressed for the sidewalks along Continental Boulevard.
One quick.
And we've also gotta consider a waiver of this lighting issue, let's deal with the lighting issue first, as to that back storage lot, what's the will of the board with respect to the applicant proposing a lighting waiver to reduce the amount of light back there, and I would say that it fits within the statutory requirement because the circumstances relative to the site plan, if he had the full light on there, would actually make it worse and affect the neighbors in a greater, to a greater degree. What's the will of the board on that question?
I would propose that we waiver that, Mr. Chairman, and I would propose a, a motion to grant the waiver for uniformity and for intensity on that back lot because of its particular use by only the applicant and his employees directly, and imposing a requirement that was designed for the public use parking lots would impose an unnecessary hardship on this application.
Okay, the, you kind of blended both of the statutory criteria there, and?
I did.
The first is that the strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and waiver would not be contrary to spirit, and the one that I sort of favor more than that is the specific circumstances relative to site plan, or conditions of the land in such site plan indicate the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulation, and I, the reason that I focused on that one is that with this site plan and the conditions of the land, the elevation and the location next to the neighbors, I think that you've got the basis to recognize that less light is better for that, but it's up to you, it's your motion.
Okay, I, I prefer it the way I made it, and I'll just cite, for example, other parking lots that may have been in a position to affect neighbors, and we did other things with them, we shielded them and protected them as best we could, but we did not waiver the intensity nor the uniformity requirements on the lot. For example, the Meramec Premium Outlets.
Yeah, no, I get the example, I'm confused a little bit on what you're suggesting that we waiver.
We're wavering the uniformity and the intensity.
Okay.
Both requirements.
And we're doing that based on which of the two statutory criteria that allow us to grant waivers?
Because the, the, the regulation, pardon?
Nelson, are you referring to the one that says strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations?
Yes, I think that's right.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, I'm sorry Nelson for being so clumsy.
No, that's okay, I'm just unaccustomed to using that, those phrases, yes.
Is there a second for Nelson's motion? Second by Ms. Falt, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, five zero zero to grant the lighting waiver as set out by Nelson, and now we've got a request in writing requesting a waiver of the sidewalk requirement along Continental Boulevard, and the argument provided in the written correspondence is that the site is very steep in the right-of-way, which would not allow proper construction of a sidewalk, our site is located along Continental Boulevard, which is a limited-access highway, this means the New Hampshire DOT has jurisdiction over the road, it also has a swale along its frontage that is used for New Hampshire DOT drainage, and a sidewalk would disturb the existing drainage flow. Of those arguments, oh, go ahead, Alistair.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant the waiver on the sidewalk on that the specific circumstances relative to the site plan and the conditions of the land in such site plan indicate the waiver will carry out in spirit and intent of the regulations.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Second, that.
Second by Ms. Falt, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of granting the sidewalk waiver, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. Disco's opposed, any abstaining? Four one zero to grant the sidewalk waiver, what's the will of the board with respect to the conditions of approval, or in the alternative, considering whether to take final action tonight? The applicant has suggested that we could work our way through some carefully worded conditions of approval, which we could also put in the hands, the capable hands of our staff to work out the bugs on, so that we've got what we ultimately need, but I do wanna sort of find out what the board thinks of that idea, and second, catalog what it is that we've intended to add to these conditions of approval, 'cause I'm not sure that I've got them all in my head straight.
Mr. Chairman, I, I like everything that was suggested apart from, I mean, I would go along with the subject to administrative approval with the exception of the, the rental office, 'cause I think it's an eyesore, and I really think somebody's gotta come back with a better picture. Now, I don't mind if we grant approval of the plan, but with the condition that we wanna see a better drawing, a better rendering, or a better-looking office, other, but I, I can't buy into this plan with that office, not there, I think it's gonna look totally unsightly compared with the rest of the immediate surrounding buildings.
I, in short, would say that it doesn't fit with the planning in the, in the, in the general area, I don't think that the thing is consistent with what's going on in the area, I think it looks out of place. Now, how do we manage that, what do you guys think in terms of how we can manage that going forward?
I'm fine coming back with a new elevation of the building, something that the board, I suppose, staff can take a first look at, and just come back for a, what did you call it, a conformance hearing, or?
Well, it can be, we could grant an approval with the condition, the condition that they come back to the board, that's been done, where they come back to the board.
Just a condition?
With any and all of it, in fact, as long as they're coming back, let's have a look at the final configuration of the parking lot and the other things that, that are there, since we're coming back anyway.
Yeah, now, understanding that conditional final approval with you coming back at least has some finality to it, how does that benefit you more than just having us vote once we have a look at it?
Phone call to my client as I leave the building?
What's that?
Makes the phone call to my client a lot easier when I leave the building?
I got you, no question.
He, he did leave me a message to call him, whenever I leave, whatever time that was, he's a McConia for planning board him, by the way, so he said he'll still be awake too.
Okay, let's see if we can catalog, we wanna clip the corner of the parking lot, we wanna adjust the lighting to be the three poles a little further away from center in that parking lot, we want to.
Slats in the fence.
Slats in the fence, three-foot berm, landscaping on top of it as we talked about before, coming up with a solution to address the pedestrians that are crossing from the neighborhood across the back of the property by fence or otherwise, what else did we talk about tonight that we wanted to add into conditions of approval? The lighting would have the shields on them.
Oh, I'm, the one thing, so.
I just thought of something, the buffers, we didn't, we don't have a clear definition on these buffers on the plan, I think it was a question about which.
Sure, one of the staff's comments required them to specify on their plan.
Yeah.
Which category of buffer is appropriate and how they're addressing to meet that.
Okay, but was the setback, were you satisfied with the setback requirements, there's, there's two setbacks, one is for no disturb and one is for no build.
Correct, and I think.
Yeah, that's already a condition on the staff memo.
This, the condition, the staff memo calls on them to better clarify that on their plan so that they label both of those setbacks, where only one of them is labeled now, and perhaps it's not even labeled.
So maybe, that's right, so maybe that should be one of the conditions.
It's eleven.
Okay, you're gonna leave it there.
So we're gonna take the whole of Tim's memo?
Yes.
As many of those things as he can do to bring back to us, some of them they can do and bring back, right?
Yeah, and certainly no question that they, if they're coming back for compliance, they could progress as far as they can with these things, I don't know if we wanna sort of individually review all of those things, or?
Well, just mention the memo, any, any of the other things in the memo that you can address, might as well clean up, make the memo shorter.
Mr. Chairman, with, with respect, we have missed one of Mr. Morse's point, which is the subject of blasting, I don't know if you know the answer to that, Bob or Kathy, are we, are we gonna have to do any blasting, in which case, we've, we have some experience of blasting and regulations in this board, so those of us who remember the outlet mall.
I talked to the owner, and I think at a minimum, I think I'm gonna have to blast a little to get this in, 'cause right now it goes up real steep, so to lower this in and maybe for the foundation, I think at a minimum, there'll be some, so we understand, and the construction company knows they'll have to do the full pre-blast survey of all the homes.
The one million dollars of insurance, et cetera, et cetera, dang, I mean, I would much happier if they did it with like they did the big part of industrial drive where they sort of put the little hammering.
No, we, we hit ledge next door and we were able to hammer it.
That's, the hammering is much better than blasting.
Yes.
I'm thinking of the Morse's sort of getting blown out of bed.
I, I won't be the one building this though, but I'm sure, I'm sure that the one that is gonna do it would, would choose hammer over blasting any day.
It just depends how much there is, and whether they.
Well, if you're gonna blast, you're gonna have to meet all the town regs, and we want pre-blast surveys and all the rest of it, and I think the last time we did it, how far around did we go, Nelson, a five hundred, I don't know, seven hundred and fifty-foot radius or something, was it?
I think it was more like a thousand and fifteen hundred.
That was a special extension of the normal radius.
I, it's called a precedent in my book.
I don't know, well, nothing really sets precedence in front of planning boards anymore.
When, the, the big difficulty down here with Home Depot was the issue with the water and the well.
I know, that's where I'm, that's where I am.
And I think this is out of that radius.
It, it could well be out of it, but I'm not familiar enough with the situation with blasting to know what our regulations are, where they're found, and how they're applied, and is there anything that the planning board's gotta do as a part of its conditions of approval to trigger that?
All under the jurisdiction of the fire department.
Okay, so if they.
They have to go to the fire department to get their permit, and they know all the.
And so we don't have to take any steps to see that happen, the fire department's gonna take care of that.
That's right, that's right.
But we can.
I like that answer.
That's right.
Doesn't the survey fall under, requiring the survey before blasting?
Oh, yeah, pre-blast survey.
Well, no, it did with the outlet mall as a part of, all that went with the outlet mall is a conditional use permit and a development agreement, it doesn't normally.
That's right.
Our jurisdiction, but I did wanna mention that the, the Home Depot, the water was the situation, and they ended up replacing wells and bringing in potable water and.
And doing hammering, basically they hammered it out, and they used some other method called Codex, which was, turned out to be expensive, but it produced equivalent energy in the ground to break the rock, and it was frozen carbon dioxide out.
I haven't done that before.
Pardon?
I know that I, we've recently done quite a few sites, and almost everybody prefers to go in and hammer it, you come into the machine and hammer it, on occasion, we just had one in Newton, Mass. from Mount Ida College, they brought in a big machine and a big hammer, and instead of coming off in chunks, they just get flakes, they were out there for weeks, and they ended up hammering it all out, but there's ledge and there's ledge.
Yeah.
Some of it breaks very easy in big chunks, some of it is incredibly hard in New Lan, in New England, so a lot of times you have to go out and try and hammer it and.
Granite State.
Big Granite State.
Anyway, with respect to that, we don't need to take any steps to accomplish that, that doesn't need to be part of, one of the ones that I wanted to mention that we haven't talked about is the salt use on the site, because you're across the road from the town's wells, and I know that that's the restriction we put on Home Depot, and probably the AutoFair site and everything else, the neighborhood has no salt use, but I don't see a note on the condition of approval related to salt, did I overlook it?
Eleven BV, eleven BV five, sorry, Roman five, less otherwise, add a note to indicate that no salt or chemical de-ices are to be used for winter maintenance, and the winter maintenance to be formed by a green pro, green, Snow Pro certified contractor.
I would suggest that if you're gonna do a no-salt. I would suggest that if you're going to do a no salt, you can eliminate the green snow pro because green snow pro is all about appropriate salt use. And so they're inconsistent to tell people to do both green snow pro and no salt.
We're going to see the conservation commission Monday night. Yeah.
Okay. And I think that they'll sort that out as well. What's that?
Are we in the aquifer here?
You're just
It is listed on my agenda as being in the aquifer conservation district.
Just outside the wellhead.
I don't think it's our aquifer, I think it's somebody else's.
No, it's probably ours.
Is it?
The wells are right there behind PC connection.
Well, six is right at PC, right, where you said, PC connection, yeah.
Now, it's not in the wellhead protection area, but it's in the aquifer conservation district, so it's close, but not right on top of it.
Okay, yeah.
So, no salt use would be in here. I don't need to see the green snow pro. It doesn't necessarily hurt anything in my view to leave it there, but I think it's redundant. Other comments or questions on, have we cataloged all of the things that we talked about and listed?
The board also discussed deliveries and unloading. Was that a specific condition you guys wanted?
It's not been unusual for us to set, well, they've set their hours of operation for their normal operation from seven to nine PM, seven AM to nine PM. I think that we ought to limit the unloading and offloading of cars, not the parts thing in the Sallyport that they've got, but the offloading of cars to, within their hours of operation.
Yeah. Yeah.
And within the property?
And within the property, yes.
Yeah, both good. And specify seven to nine.
Yeah.
Although you can't control the independent delivery contractors is the biggest problem.
Yeah, but they can sit there and wait, they're not
They sit and wait, well, they're going to sit and wait. We've admitted that.
Yes, that's not what I meant. I meant to specify the hours of operation for this business.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's right.
All right, sir.
So that's seven AM to nine PM, seven days a week?
I have a question on that. Will that apply to the car rental place too?
Yes.
Yeah, the car rental place is the primary business that we're looking at on the site.
There's so many different little things here, it gets confusing. Because I agree with you, you don't care for the way the building looks. I don't particularly agree that you, with you that you have to change the color. I just don't think we have enough information on enterprise building and the, all the stuff around it, the vegetation and whatever. You have a nice site plan, but it's sort of lacking in that area. So something would have to be done.
And I'm not sure what words we chose. We talked about that a little bit earlier, about having them come back and show us the new elevations with something more aesthetically pleasing. And we ought to give them some pointers as to what it is that we're looking for them to accomplish architecturally, because otherwise we're just telling them to go back and try again.
Yeah.
No direction.
I saw something new on, we're talking about the refrigeration and the air conditioning stuff on the roof. In another part of the country, I saw like a pyramid type thing. It was like a cover that fits on a roof. Everything is underneath, you know, you just see a pyramid. I haven't seen it around here.
I haven't seen it around here yet. I couldn't judge, I couldn't offer the opinion whether I thought that would be
I just feel the building has got to be much more like the rest of the residential and across the street in Pennsyl Square buildings, which are not slab buildings like that.
Well, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure that
I like the idea of, you know, a few sloping roofs and things.
Let's, that's a good one. Let's talk about that. I like a sloping, sloping roof. I think that that would be a good place to start. I think New England style building. I know that their sign's going to be green, don't object to that. I can't, wouldn't oppose to that. I think limit the awning to the front entrance, which I think you've already done. Show some elevations that indicate the sidewalk curb or landscaping that's going to be around it. If there is equipment on the roof, it's got to be screened. What else you guys got in mind? Anything?
No.
The enterprise building looks like it's got a garage door in the back or side of it. What's that about?
They wash the cars, basically. They wash the cars in there, that's it.
Vacuuming, etc.
Vacuuming, you know, after someone uses it.
Right, clean them out.
They water wash the outsides or just vacuuming and clean the insides?
Both.
They've got all the appropriate water recovery and pollution and all of that fun stuff going on in there?
You told them that they had to do that.
And that's going to be connected to the sewer?
The sewer department does unless you do floor drains.
So what are you going to do with the water from the wash?
Enterprise isn't here, but I'll have to ask them how they're going to recycle that or how they do that.
Okay.
I know the floor drains themselves, we'll have to work out with the sewer department. I know the floor drains aren't allowed.
Okay.
Once you process it, can it go in somehow? I don't know, I'll have to, I'll track with Ken, Condi.
Okay. Let's let us know. Is there anything else that we want to offer them in terms of guidance in designing their building? Breaking up facades, window treatments, anything like that?
It's such a small building, I'm not that unhappy with it. The enterprise looking building, but, so.
Okay. Stan?
I just want to ask, is that the signage that you're talking about on this building?
Yes.
Enterprise?
Enterprise.
Lately, everybody agrees with our town standards on signage. And then a month later, they come back looking for an exception to double the signage. So you're not going to do that, right?
Well, they need a variance to get that.
They're going to need a variance for what they've got, Stan.
We need a variance to get that.
Yeah.
But the
All they want is to meet the town standards, that's all.
Signs illuminated?
No.
Is there any light boxes or light packs on the building?
Yes, there are lights, there are lights mounted on the building. There's, there's a four.
Could you speak to the microphone, please?
Pull the one in front of you forward.
Hey, the, the illumination here is dependent on lights being mounted around these one, two, three, four, five, six locations. And those are very low-powered LED lights.
They're taken into account in your lighting plans?
In the lighting plan, because that got rid of some of the poles in the, in the front here.
Okay. All directed downward, no lights shining up in the sky?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm not sure how that sign is illuminated, so I will find that out.
Looks like in the picture, it's one of the, you know, basic
Yeah, from the inside, but
Inside or behind, behind the letters, maybe.
Yeah. Anything else for the building, Desiree?
No.
Seems like three of us don't even have that strong of a feeling in the building at all.
No, I don't.
Are there any other conditions of approval that we've discussed? Is the board comfortable with setting out these conditions of approval that we've just listed and having the staff work through with the applicant to put the final words on that so that we can consider voting on conditional final approval tonight?
I'd prefer to see it, but that'd be my preference.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Is there a timeframe for when they were supposed to come in to show you? Is it just, because you have the six months?
Didn't we pick a date in our October meeting or something like that? Or was that the other applicant that was coming? What do you guys think in terms of how much time you need to address the couple of things?
When do you think we'll be getting CLD's comments?
I would say within a week.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly what date they got them.
When do you need us to raise the next, the next planning board?
Well, remember, once you get out, you're going to have to give CLD some new material.
Right, so we'll have to send them the new
So they've got to generate that first, yeah.
Lighting fixtures.
I suggest if you do conditionally approve it tonight,
Yeah.
that lets them start financing contracts, all that stuff.
Yeah.
I might say six weeks instead of four, just so that we can wrap stuff up, state permits, DOT permits. It just gives us a so not as rushed.
Okay. It'd be better than not asking for extensions and so on.
Sure.
Well, it's six weeks when we'll be on the schedule to come back.
Second meeting in October.
But then the approval will be for a longer period.
So we've got one in October 21st or November 4th?
Can I suggest a six months? If we don't, can't start construction, six months might be a little short for the actual length of the
Six months or weeks?
We'll be back in six weeks to show you
Oh, and you want more time to do all the
For the actual approval, though, we won't be done in six months because of the winter time timeframe. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
How long would you necessarily, are you expecting to need for the, one year?
Yeah.
Give us time to go, but just a bad time of the year to do it in six months.
That's why I was asking a little early about you stop working on November 15th.
Right.
Sure. Now, conditions of approval don't relate to constructing it, those are things that are done with the plan.
We can give you the condition as approval in the middle of February. You may not bulk belt a shovel into the ground till later, but you can still get your final pieces signed off before that.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't tie the two together.
So if you're Okay, six months to meet the conditions of approval. Oh, yeah, okay.
And build it whenever you want.
So we're leaving it six months and that you're coming in for the October 21st meeting, which has a deadline of September 30th.
Twenty first, September 30th.
So you want, are you saying you really want conditional final approval subject to a presentation to address the issues raised on the, on the 25th of October?
Twenty first of October, yes.
Twenty whatever date.
Does that work for you guys?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant conditional final approval subject to all the conditions that have been raised tonight, which have been very nicely cataloged, and conditional that they appeared before us on the 21st of October with answering all the issues that have been raised at this meeting.
And showing the new plans with
The plans, the, the, the building, everything else that's been addressed.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Second.
Second by Desiree Fault. Donna, has that motion got enough specificity in it to satisfy what you need?
I think so.
Okay. Have you been cataloging all of the things that we've been talking about?
I've been trying.
Do you have any questions for us to address? Do you guys know what you need to accomplish between now and the next? Do you need any further clarification or clarity?
I think I've got about 10 pages of notes.
Well, then, you know, you know what we're going to do then.
Yeah.
If you're going to stay here till 11:30, you might as well get your money's worth. Anything else?
Yeah.
All in favor of granting conditional final approval subject to the motion and all the conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero.
Does that make your customer happy?
Yeah, he will.
Getting, getting approval is always better than not.
Yeah.
What time you'd be here if the first applicant didn't ask for an extension?
Oh, no, we're not. We did that for the AA building.
They come around pretty often.
And good times or something, didn't we do the same thing? Yes, we did.
We do them fairly frequently. Number seven on our agenda is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern.
Good night, God bless.
I don't have any items of concern that need addressing at 11:30 at night. Stan, let's hear what you got.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
Motion to accept the minutes as printed, is there a second for that?
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Mills. Any other discussion regarding the minutes of Tuesday, August 19th? Desiree?
No.
Oh, I thought you said whoa.
No, I said no. Sorry.
Okay.
Mic's off.
All in favor approving the minutes of August 19th as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero to adopt the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, the wager.
Seconded by Desiree Fault.
Yes. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.